being called to order at 6:09 PM. We'll take roll call and then I'll run in and get my jacket because I forgot it in the back. So let's do a roll call first. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We have to do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Roll call.
Okay.
Council members, Asadrean?
Here.
Divine?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Botman? Here. Now, just give me one second. Well, we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and...
Where are you going to go?
I don't know.
Did you go to the restroom?
Oh, okay. No, no, no. I didn't have...
I pledge allegiance.
Okay. Right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing now and we'll have the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Tongva people. In the spirit of unity and compassion transcending the boundaries that often divide us, let us reflect on the victims of terrorism, war, violence, and forced displacement across the globe, and the families and communities within our very city that are touched deeply by these events. Let us not be mere witnesses to their suffering, but instead empathetic stewards of compassion. As we contemplate these global tragedies, let us recognize each person as a fellow human being deserving of dignity, understanding, and love. In embracing the shared threads of our humanity, let us foster an environment of empathy and grace. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. Let's see. May we have your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for the October 24, 2023, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on October 18, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's our first item?
Presentations and appointments. The first item is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, October 31, 2023, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor Botman, members of City Council. Next week, we have a very short agenda for the City Council. Again, meeting will start at 6 o'clock. We have two consent items. The first will be a report from the Public Works Department to award a contract for traffic signal maintenance, and the second will be a report for council's consideration to approve a tentative, I'm sorry, a final track map for a 98-unit residential condominium project located at 520 North Central Avenue and 521 North Orange Street. We'll also have just one action item that evening, and that'll be the introduction of an ordinance prohibiting the use, distribution, and sale of polystyrene products on city premises.
Very good. Thank you. And I know we have consent items. Before you read them, oh, you're not going to read them individually, but there are two things that we need to poll. One of them, I understand, 4F is going to be an action item. That was mistakenly put in the consent calendar, so 4F will be action. I guess we can take that as our first action item? Okay. And then a member of the public wants us to poll item 4D for a separate discussion.
D.
4D. So we have 4D, and then 4F will be an action item. And are there any other items to be polled?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Let's have a roll call on that, then.
Council members, Asadrean?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay. So would you read 4D into the record?
Item 4D is Public Works Regarding Professional Services Agreement to Develop the 2025-2045 Glendale Recycling Center Master Plan. One, motion authorizing the city manager or designee to award a professional services agreement to HDR Engineering, Inc., to develop the 2025-2045 Glendale Recycling Center Master Plan.
Okay. And is the member of the public that wanted to speak on this, has she called in or not here?
We have not yet received any calls.
Not? Oh. Okay, because we both got an email asking us to pull that item, but if she's not here to speak...
I'll move 4D.
Then, and we're sure she's not online, she's not trying to call in?
We'll check again, but...
Because we got a specific request to pull the item. I would hate to just rush through it. Nothing showing up?
No calls.
Okay, then let's move forward with it.
I'll second that consent item.
Okay, roll call.
Council members, Asadrean?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay. So would you read 4D into the record?
Item 4D is Public Works Regarding Professional Services Agreement to Develop the 2025-2045 Glendale Recycling Center Master Plan. One, motion authorizing the city manager or designee to award a professional services agreement to HDR Engineering, Inc., to develop the 2025-2045 Glendale Recycling Center Master Plan.
Okay. And is the member of the public that wanted to speak on this, has she called in or not here?
We have not yet received any calls.
Not? Oh. Okay, because we both got an email asking us to pull that item, but if she's not here to speak...
I'll move 4D.
Then, and we're sure she's not online, she's not trying to call in?
We'll check again, but...
Because we got a specific request to pull the item. I would hate to just rush through it.
No calls.
Okay, then let's move forward with it.
I'll second that consent item.
Okay, roll call.
Council members, Asadrean?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay. What's our next item?
Five, City Council staff.
Our next item are council and staff comments.
Okay.
4F was going to be taken as an action item.
As an action item, yeah. So that'll be our first action item. So first, we'll have our staff comments, public comments, and then we'll go to that item. Yeah, Council Member Kasakian?
I'd like to put forth the name and nomination of Dennis Rin to serve on the city's Civil Service Commission. We interviewed Council Member Divine, and I interviewed three candidates for this position, and Mr. Rin impressed us both, and we would like to bring his name forward for a vote and an appointment by the council at a future meeting. Thank you.
Is that, do you have any other comments, or is that it?
Okay. For this evening, no.
Okay. Council Member Asatria?
I don't know anything.
Anything to share?
Yes, I do. First, I would like to send my condolences out to the family of Gladie Cabatek. She passed away at 97 this past week. She and her husband, Jack, were really pillars of the community when he was alive and they were together. She started a program at Glendale Community College for women to re-enter college, and it was very successful and it's still going on today. So to her family, I would like to express my deepest condolences. Secondly, I wanted, and this is probably the main reason I'm here tonight, is because during the previous council meeting, when I couldn't attend because I had smashed my face and broken my toe and everything else, I made remarks regarding the horrific attack on Israel, and in so doing, I referenced the Armenian genocide. In so doing, in no way did I intend my remarks to be disrespectful or minimalizing to the Armenian community or regarding the genocide. My remarks were intended to point out another attempt at genocide, a genocide of the Jews. Hamas said they wanted to wipe them off the face of the earth, and to me, that is a genocide. And I wanted to verbalize my heartbreak at another example of man's inhumanity to man. I apologize to all of those who misunderstood my words. I guess I could have articulated differently, but please know that I stand by our Armenian community and Artsoc, especially in their humanitarian disaster right now and in their long struggle for peace. I think my track record in the Armenian community speaks for itself. I have always supported the Armenian organizations, the community, the causes. I will continue. I have supported them in the past. I will support them now, and I will support them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I would like to place on the agenda for the next meeting, or whenever appropriate, the nomination of Chris Cragnotti to serve another term on the Historic Preservation Committee.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay. Did I skip you?
Surprise!
Yeah, okay.
Already spoke.
You didn't have anything, right?
I just mentioned my...
I skipped you?
No, I said I don't have any comments.
Okay, you don't have any comments. Okay, just want to make sure. I'm a little slow on the uptake today. I'm not feeling the best. I had three shots of vaccine two days ago, and it's kind of getting to me.
I will just say one thing. I did not know about Ms. Cabatek passing, and so I want to extend my condolences to the family. She and her husband were pillars of our community. Her son is a well-known attorney and just a wonderful matriarch. Her parents were survivors of the Armenian genocide, by the way. She was an immigrant. And the one thing that I'll never forget is every Red Cross fundraiser, her and her husband, would be sitting in the front row, and their laughs were infectious. We lost her husband a while back, and now that we've lost Gladie, I want to express my condolences to the Cabatek family. Thank you for bringing that up, Council Member Divine.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so I have a few things. Firstly, I have another nomination, this one for the Arts and Culture Commission. Council Member Kasakian and I did several interviews for candidates for Arts and Culture Commission. We interviewed some really great candidates, and it was, we were feeling like we wished we could get them all on board and hoping that somehow we can keep them, either bring them into the commission in the future or have them somehow or another get involved in what we're doing with arts and culture. Nonetheless, we did decide to renominate Arlene Vidor for another term on the Arts and Culture Commission, and I'd like to put that up for a vote next week. City Manager Rubik Galanian and I were in Korea last week. We had a very interesting trip, a very intense and intensive and immersive trip, and saw some really interesting things that they're doing there. Entirely new towns that they're building from scratch at lightning speed, to howls, a lot of the people that are coming in from the countryside, it's a rapidly urbanizing country, and the urbanization is very much concentrated around Seoul, the Seoul metropolitan area, and it's just incredible what they're doing. We also looked at some of the ways they're handling waste, which were fascinating. I don't know how applicable they will be to us, but very interesting. And then the last thing we spent some time on is looking how they've converted some disused, kind of neglected riversides into very nice walk-bike paths that we could tell immediately the community was enjoying and taking advantage of. So it was a very interesting trip. I attended a dedication of a New Oak of Peace at the Verdugo Adobe the other day. For those of you who don't know, we have this wonderful little park called the Verdugo Adobe. It's in the Verdugo Woodlands. And this is the site where during the US, I think we call it the US-Mexican War, where the parties met to negotiate the terms of surrender, which ultimately led to the US taking control of California. So a very significant event happened right here in Glendale, in front of a tree called the Oak of Peace. The tree unfortunately died of root rot many, many years ago, and a new oak, an Engelmann oak, has been dedicated to replace it. So this was, it was a great event. I don't know if any of you or anybody watching went, but they did a historical reenactment, which was a lot of fun, just reenacting the whole scene of how these negotiations took place. And there were dances, and it was a really well-done event. We also, a number of us, attended the Filipino-American History Month Celebration yesterday?
Yes.
I think it was yesterday?
Yes.
Last night? Okay. Very good turnout, and I think everybody had a good time. And it was, thanks to the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale for continuously keeping a focus on the Filipino-American community and some of these important events. They always do a good job with these things. And just one last point I want to make on community event announcements which are coming up. Going forward, I would like for people to identify the community event that they are announcing, and I want to make sure that these are community event announcements. At our last meeting, we had somebody who abused the opportunity, put in a card for a community event announcement. When I asked him if it was a community event announcement, he said yes, it absolutely was not, and he smirked as he walked away from the podium. So we're not going to allow that, so we will ask for those to be made clear ahead of time. And I believe we have two community event announcements coming up, but before we go to that, I will ask whether there are any staff comments.
No, Mr. Mayor.
No staff comments. Okay. So we'll move on, then. What is next?
Next are community event announcements, and speakers have three minutes each.
Okay. And I have two cards. First, I have Alan Durham telling us about shredding day.
Yeah, really big event, but thank you, Mayor Botman, City Council. I'm here to announce the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association Annual Document Shredding Day. It's a very popular annual event sponsored by the association. You don't need to be a member of the association. Everybody's welcome to come. There'll be a shredding truck in the parking lot, and you'll watch your documents shredded, you know, while you're there, so you don't have to worry about security. It will be a week from Saturday to Saturday, November 4, 9:00 a.m. to noon, the parking lot of the Grahamview Presbyterian Church, 1130 Ruberta Avenue. And there's a nominal charge for non-members of the association of $8 a box, and that's just to help offset the cost of the shredding truck. Association members get three boxes free, $8 a box after that, but everybody's welcome to come. It's a very popular event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Okay, our next card is from Emily Rogers, and Emily, could please come forward? And just to reiterate, this is really just to announce the event and refrain from any general public comment.
Okay. I wasn't sure if this qualified as a community event, so I asked, and I was told that it was fine to present during this time. So, good evening, Mayor Botman, Council members, and Glendale community. My name's Emily Rogers, and I am the Political Action Committee Chairperson for the Glendale Teachers Association, and we're currently accepting applications for the GTA PAC endorsement interview process for the Glendale City Council candidates, and this application can be found on our website, which is glandaleteachers.org. If you will be running as a candidate for city council and want to be considered for GTA endorsement, please submit your application form by Friday, October 27, for interviews on November 1. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And finally, we have Liz Radley, who'll tell us about a Halloween-related event in the Rancho, I think.
Good evening. It's true, it is in the Rancho because I rarely leave the Rancho. It's Saturday, October 28, at the corner of Rancho Avenue and Weston Avenue, 10:00 a.m., lasts about an hour. It's a free event where people ride over with their horses or ponies or lead them over, kids, adults. They dress the ponies and horses up in Halloween garb and walk around, and we give them prizes. It's really like a little local neighborhood event, but anyone who would like to come and watch, bring their kids, let them see the ponies, we have at least one of the retired Griffith Park ponies there, who I'm sure would love to see some more kids. So it's like 10:00 on Saturday. Thank you.
10:00 on Saturday. Thank you. And I think, you've been doing this, because I think I've been to one.
Yes, Easter, Halloween, Christmas, pretty much any excuse we can come up with.
I think it was Christmas I've been to one. Yeah, yeah.
And we'll be doing one. I'll be back here for that. Thank you.
Okay. It's always a wonderful event. Okay. Very good. And thank you, everyone, for staying on community event announcements. Okay, what is next?
Next, our action item, and we're taking the consent item F as the first action item, so I'll read that into the record. It's Police Department Regarding Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs Request for Authorization to Accept Grant Funds in the Amount of $17,592 to be used to procure automatic license plate reader equipment. One, motion to accept Bureau of Justice Assistance 2023 Justice Assistance Grant Funds and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the necessary agreement certification and other documents required to accept the grant. Two, resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the city manager or his designee to enter into an agreement with Flock Group, Inc., for the procurement of ALPR equipment in an amount not to exceed $18,450. Three, resolution to appropriate $17,592 in B J A F Fiscal Year 2023 Local J A G Program Grant Funds.
Thank you. And Mr. Galanian, could you also just explain for all of us why this couldn't be in the consent and we're moving it to action items? Because, you know, people get confused. I still get confused about what goes into consent and what doesn't.
Yes, indeed. The mayor, members of City Council, the reason this was supposed to have been listed under action items is there's a resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize me to enter into an agreement with this vendor. And every time we request that you approve dispensing with competitive bidding, it requires to be under action items. With that, I'm going to invite Captain Robert Williams, our foremost expert on flock cameras, to present this item for your consideration.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Botman. My name is Captain Robert Williams, and I have the privilege of being here tonight on behalf of Chief Sid to talk about this item. I'll start with saying our goal with this proposal, if you authorize it, is to I'll start with saying, our, our goal with this proposal, if you authorize it, is to continue to enhance public safety by leveraging our technology capabilities and work, continuing to work effectively with members of our community. Automated License Plate Readers, otherwise known as ALPR, is technology our department has been using for many years. Throughout the years, we have subscribed to various platforms to use this technology. And in 2020, we started to use a new ALPR tool that was from a company called Flock Safety. Flock Safety Cameras are law enforcement-grade ALPR system that offers a long list of proprietary features, but most notably, it is completely solar-powered and integrated with cellular communication, which means it is entirely wireless, it does not rely on Wi-Fi, and it's cloud-based storage. And the important part of that is the fact that it is wireless, although these devices are posted on poles, because they're wireless, we're able to essentially easily remove them and relocate them if we see the fit to do that. Flock is also the only ALPR provider to officially partner and integrate with Axon, which is the company that we use for our body worn cameras, as well as the dash cams that we have inside of our patrol vehicle. So essentially, those cameras will act as ALPRs as well. The city of Glendale currently has 28 active cameras spread across the city. All but one were purchased by Glendale Police Department through various grants, and one of the cameras was purchased by Neighborhood Homeowners Association. There are also several privately-owned Flock cameras within the city that are owned by businesses within the city. There are several homeowners' associations who have recently expressed interest in purchasing cameras, and we're partnering with many of those associations to work with them to either cover the cost or split the cost, which we have done in the past, to purchase more cameras and cover the areas that they wish to cover. Up to this point, we're very pleased with the service and the product of Flock Safety Cameras. We have found a lot of success in preventing and solving crimes. We have used this product to solve crimes, to robberies, burglaries, most recently to organized retail flash mob-style thefts that are happening in the downtown area, including homicides. In some circumstances, we've used this product to help us find missing and lost individuals. If this proposal is approved tonight, we will, with additional of the three cameras, we will have a total of 31 cameras within the city. And with additional grant funds that have already been approved, we'll get another additional 20, giving us close to about 50 cameras altogether at some point in the future. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
These, the exact job that these Flock cameras do, they take down license plates? Is that what they're, therefore?
Correct. The old technology, all it did was read a license plate, but technology has advanced so much now. Flock camera, what's unique about them is you can put unique characteristics of a vehicle within it, so you can customize your search. So essentially, if a vehicle doesn't have a license plate, but it has a broken taillight and it has a bumper sticker or a roof rack, if you know the color or the make and model, you can filter your search to narrow down your search. And that is something that we use routinely. Our detectives use that for investigations.
Is that how you, you managed to track down some of the flash mob members?
Correct. Flock was used for...
At the Americana?
That is correct. We used Flock to identify at least one vehicle in that instance.
Excellent. Okay, this is a great, great project, so I'd be more than happy to move the item.
Any other questions before we get a second?
Hope to good work.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And roll call, please.
Council members, Asadriyan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kazakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is action item A, Community Services and Parks Regarding Agreement with E-Clean Technologies LLC. One, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and approving an agreement for the rental delivery and training for 31 wall-mounted aqueous ozone equipment for the sanitation of restrooms and two, two mobile pressure washers to sanitize other park facilities, amenities throughout the city of Glendale in the amount of $304,200 for a three-year term with the option to buy at the conclusion of the term. And authorizing the city manager or designee to enter into and execute an agreement with E-Clean Technologies LLC in an amount not to exceed $304,200 for a three-year term with the option to buy at the conclusion of the term. Two, resolution of appropriation to appropriate funds in the amount of $205,676 if council elects to purchase the aqueous ozone equipment instead of the three-year rental with the option to buy at the conclusion of the term.
Thank you. And Mr. Kalanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of city council, I'm going to invite Oning Kulanyan, our Director of Community Services and Parks, to, who has a brief presentation for your consideration.
Very brief. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the council. The item before you tonight is to ask council to dispense with competitive bidding and enter into a three-year agreement with E-Clean Technologies for 31 wall-mounted aqueous ozone equipment for restroom sanitization and two power washers to sanitize additional parks, parks, parks facilities. Aqueous ozone is a strong oxidizer proven to kill germs, bacteria, viruses, while not leaving residue or harmful waste in services. These units are environmentally safe, simple, effective, and eliminates the use of chemicals while cleaning restrooms. This past year, we had staff conduct a pilot study using two wall-mounted units, one at Sports Complex and one at Brand, and basically, the units are very effective. The bathroom, especially at the Sports Complex, sanitize, deodorize, and there's no foul smell whenever we use the ozone, the aqueous ozone machines. The units also improve operational efficiency by reducing cleaning time. That's good for labor. We reduce cleaning time by half and allocate those resources to have staff conduct actual landscape maintenance in our parks. After the three-year agreement is over, we would want the option to purchase the equipment at $100 per equipment, costing the city an additional $3,300. With that being said, I do have the pictures of the equipment on the screen. The one on the left is the wall-mounted, and then the one on the right is our power washer that we're requesting to purchase. If you have any questions regarding the units, I do have the co-founders of E-Clean Technology, Mr. Keenan Chung, as well as Mr. P. Kalanis here, to answer any questions regarding the product.
Hey, are there any questions?
No.
No?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
For the lease, for the lease rental.
Yeah, second.
Okay. That was easy. Roll call, please.
Council members, Asadriyan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kazakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Thank you. So what's our next item?
Our next item is action item B, Glendale Water and Power Regarding 2024 Integrated Resource Plan Updates. One, motion to note and file.
Okay. And Mr. Kalanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of city council, as it was written into the record, this item is for note and file. It's an update on the process, the progress of Integrated Resource Plan for 2024. We do not seek direction, but we will be back once the IRP is finalized to get direction from you for its adoption or any changes that may be necessary. With that, I'll turn it over to Scott Mellon, our Assistant General Manager of Water and Power, for the presentation, and Mark Young, our General Managers, available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kalanian. Good evening, Mayor Brotman and council members. As promised, we said we'd come back and talk to you about the status of our IRP process, and that's what we're going to cover tonight. So, start by giving you a little background. As you may be familiar, Senate Bill SB 350 requires the governing body of a publicly-owned utility with an annual electric average load exceeding 700 gigawatt-hours, such as Glendale Water and Power, to adopt an IRP and provide updates at least once every five years to assist the utility in achieving planning goals. These goals are generally focused on system reliability, cost-effectiveness, environmental sustainability, essentially GWP's mantra of reliability, affordability, and sustainability. The IRP is a dynamic, long-term planning document that utilizes our current and understanding of technologies and forecasts and guides GWP with energy-related decisions while ensuring alignment with regulatory requirements and policy goals, economic considerations, and the evolving energy landscape. GWP issued a request for proposal in February, in February 2023 to engage a consultant with the knowledge, experience, and analytic tools required to assist in the development of Glendale's 2024 IRP. Aside from the technical support, the consultant was also required to have the means to lead and facilitate public stakeholder engagements, including community town hall and stakeholder technical advisory working group meetings. This was to ensure the community's priorities and concerns regarding energy resources, cost, and system stability were considered as supply portfolios were developed in a transparent and data-driven manner. On May 2nd, 2023, the city council approved staff's recommendation to award the contract to Ascend Analytics for the development of the IRP with Strategen Consulting as a subcontractor guiding a detailed stakeholder engagement effort. In Ascend Analytics' original proposal, they planned to host two in-person town halls on the IRP. After feedback from the city council and the community, and thorough discussions with Ascend Analytics and Strategen Consulting teams, the number of community town halls was increased to four. To date, three community town halls have been held at the following times and locations and covering the following topics. On Thursday, June 29th, at Pacific Community Center, we covered an introduction to Integrated Resource Plans, the basics of GWP's system, and the IRP modeling process. We also performed a community resource preference activity to gather input on preferred and non-preferred energy resources. On Monday, July 24th, at Spar Heights Community Center, staff provided additional details on GWP's system, local versus remote resources, custom, customer-sided resources, an update on the GWP's plan modeling scenarios, and the STAG process was covered. A community preference activity to gather input on preferred clean energy timeline, community cost sensitivity, and preferred local versus remote energy resources was completed. On Saturday, August 12th, at Brand Studios, a presentation of modeling inputs and assumptions was given, as well as an update on STAG process and all proposed modeling scenarios. This was followed with a discussion of scenarios and other topics. There were around 35 attendees at the first two meetings, while 27 attended the third. The third meeting was hosted on weekend to provide flexibility for individuals unavailable to join during the week. Armenian and Spanish interpreters were available at all meetings, and a recording of all town halls and the associated presentations are available at the following website included on the bottom of the slide.
Question? Question, please?
Sure.
How many attended, how many attended the weekend meeting?
The weekend was about 27.
So, okay, good.
Yeah. We'll jump into the STAG group. So STAG stands for Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group. The Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group is comprised of 14 individuals who live and/or work in Glendale, who can provide consistent and detailed community input to the IRP process. The STAG was formed using a two-pronged approach. GWP sent invitations to 12 organizations who represent important segments of the Glendale community, including renters, homeowners, environmental advocates, the Latino and Armenian communities, and others. From these invitations, eight organizations ultimately confirmed their interest in serving on STAG. Simultaneously, GWP issued an open call for STAG members with an application available on the GWP, GWP website and at the first IRP community town hall. GWP received 22 applications from this process. Strategen Consulting was responsible for reviewing the applications based on a set of pre-established and publicly transparent criteria listed on the GWP website. After applying these criteria, Strategen narrowed down to seven top applicants who extended invitations to join. The STAG's size was reduced from 15 original members to 14 due to one accepted applicant's absence to the first STAG meeting and unresponsiveness to communication requests. Strategen opted not to replace this member with another applicant, given any replacement member would already have missed the STAG orientation. Like the town halls, the number of STAG meetings was also increased from GWP's initial proposal, from four to six. STAG has met five times so far, all in person at the GWP offices, with meetings at the following times and covering the following topics. Wednesday, July 12th, we had an introduction to members and discussed their priorities. We had a presentation on Integrated Resource Plans, the basics of GWP's system, and the IRP modeling process, and general group discussion. Wednesday, July 19th, we covered additional information on GWP's system based on member questions. We debriefed on community preferences expressed at the first town hall. Strategen ran a brief brainstorming activity on STAG's preferred clean energy timeline, resource preferences, and resource concerns. We also had a discussion of the planning constraints and resource options STAG should consider in its scenarios. On Wednesday, August 2nd, members debriefed on outcomes of last meeting's brief brainstorming activity and second town hall. GWP and Strategen presented on planned modeling scenarios and potential options for STAG scenarios. There was a discussion of STAG scenario preference with a first scenario concept agreed upon by the end of the meeting. Wednesday, August 9th, Strategen presented an example of modeling results for illustrative purposes only, a presentation of inputs and assumptions on Glendale load forecast, market and resource prices, and local resource potential. We then had a discussion on these items. We closed with the presentation of survey results of STAG scenario preferences conducted prior to that meeting, and did some brainstorming and discussion on STAG Scenario 2 with a concept agreed upon by the end of the meeting. Wednesday, September 6th, we ascend, presented some initial modeling results from two of GWP's scenarios, primarily related to the base conditions. There was significant group discussion followed by brainstorming and decision-making on STAG Scenario 3 with a concept agreed upon by the end of the meeting. Final STAG meeting has been moved a couple times, I'm sure you've seen it, in order to ensure the modeling process was complete enough to provide useful results to the STAG members. The final meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 1st. It's worth noting that in addition to meetings, Strategen pursued other techniques to gather STAG input, share information, and answer questions. These include conducting surveys between meetings and hosting optional virtual STAG office hours for members to ask questions for the IRP team. From the beginning, STAG has shown strong interest in learning about GWP's system, its unique planning constraints, and resource options for the utility. Topics that have been continually raised across the meeting include transmission, customer solar, and GWP's progress towards city goals, virtual power plants, the feasibility and impacts of hydrogen usage, GWP's transition to 100% clean energy, cost implications, and system reliability. To ensure the public could follow the content to STAG meetings, presentations and anonymized minutes have been posted to the GWP IRP website provided here. Slight change, it's the same website as on the last slide with the addition of STAG. As was discussed with council, GWP initially planned for five modeling scenarios, three from GWP and two guided by the Glendale community and further defined by STAG. During the course of town halls and STAG meetings, it became obvious that an additional community scenario that provided supplementary dimension and data to the other two community scenarios was necessary. Rather than attempt to replace one of GWP's three scenarios with another community scenario, GWP and Ascend Analytics ultimately decided to make a third community scenario available to STAG for a total of six modeling scenarios. GWP staff still consider, GWP staff did consider replacing one of the three GWP scenarios, but ultimately opted to not to because several STAG members were concerned about affordability and had agreed to the community scenario profiles based on the information that would be gained from the already-defined GWP scenarios. Scenario development began at the town halls, which included community preference activities facilitated, facilitated by Strategen. Several clear signals emerged from the polling. One, high interest in customer-sided resources, namely rooftop solar. Two, interest in developing local resources to minimize transmission challenges. Three, preference for renewable resources. And four, interest in achieving 100% clean energy faster than the Cali- And four, interest in achieving 100% clean energy faster than the California mandate requires, and ideally by 2035. When discussing this information with STAG, it was prevalent that many STAG members shared this view. Compared to the town halls, STAG discussions were also permeated with concerns regarding reliability and affordability raised by several members. After considering input received at the town halls and brainstorming potential approaches for community scenarios, STAG coalesced around the following three scenarios. First one, high local resources plus accelerated electrification by 2035. This focuses on local resources, both customer-sided and utility scale, while achieving City Council's clean energy goals of 100% by 2035. Looks at 10% of customers with solar by 2027, considers reach codes, and 100 megawatts of DERs. The scenario also models accelerated electrification compared to GWP's scenarios. Second one, it was moderate local resources plus long-duration energy storage by 2042. This achieves 90% clean energy by 2035 and 100% by 2042. Will take a middle path on local resource assumptions, assuming higher potential for utility scale and customer-sided resources than GWP's baseline, but lower than the first example. This scenario will also model a long-duration energy storage, LDES, project built in Glendale during the IRP period. The LDES would be in addition to the 75 megawatt, 300-megawatt-hour planned battery storage at Grayson already considered in the model. Third scenario is moderate local resources by 2040. This achieves 90% clean energy by 2035 and 100% by 2040, pretty much as in number two. Takes more moderate assumptions on local resource potential compared to GWP's baseline and STAG's first scenario. Strategen emphasized from the beginning that the goal of the scenario development process was for every STAG member to have at least one community scenario they felt good about. After much discussion and compromise, it seems these three scenarios described above met that goal. These were all voted on and gained consensus from the STAG members alone. Here's a summary of the community input integrated into the IRP process thus far. Two additional town halls and two additional STAG meetings, addition of a third community-informed scenario for modeling for a total of six scenarios, application of social cost-to-carbon sensitivity analysis to all scenarios, compilation of public key assumption spreadsheet from Ascend Analytics, which will be released on GWP website following updates from STAG. And that's it. So here, moving forward, Ascend will continue to refine the models for the six.
I have a question. Mr. Mellon.
Sure.
Could you go back? So, you're showing us three scenarios here, but you said there's six scenarios.
Yes.
Where are the other three?
The other three are the original three we already informed council on that were GWP scenarios.
Okay, you don't have them described here?
No. We're covering the topics that STAG came up with.
Okay. I'd be interested in a reminder of what those, and how those three are and how they differ from these three.
Sure. The three are meeting council-guided 2035, 100% by 2035, meeting the state's guidelines, and the third one is strictly what the most affordable scenario could be.
Okay. Still meeting the state's guidelines, of course.
In one form or another, yes. We could meet it with buying recs or that form.
Okay. And for the 2035 or the 2045 scenarios, the first two that you described?
Right.
Was there any position taking on how you're going to balance between remote resources and local resources?
We still have an issue with transmission, so the balance is going to be whatever the bottleneck is.
Okay.
And when the transmission becoming available in the future.
So you were assuming in those existing transmission constraints persist over the 20-year time horizon?
Up to some point, yes. We are planning on having additional, I believe it's 72 megawatts in the STS, but we still have to be concerned about the bottleneck actually into the LA system proper.
Okay, but nothing in addition to what we know. We know about that, right?
Yes.
Because we've already contracted for that.
Yes.
Okay.
On a side note, we are working with LA. LA has six different transmission projects they are looking at. Of course, those same six projects have been looked at for at least the last five years, and they haven't made any headway on them. I know one of that they've pushed in, pushed ahead a little bit extra, but we're still working with them to try and resolve some of those bottlenecks into the future.
Okay. Please, we can. Oh, do you have a question? Councilmember Satrian.
Are you aware of the city of LA's, like, the three? So they got four plans or four scenarios, and out of the four, my understanding is three of them were meeting the 2035 deadline that they had set locally. Are you aware of any of this?
No. Who, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of the.
City of Los Angeles.
City of Los Angeles?
Yeah.
No, I'm not aware of what they were working on for their IRP.
Okay, so their IRP had four scenarios submitted, and out of the four, three of them incorporated their local 2035, and I'm trying to understand, and 100% to 2035. So I'm trying to understand why R has different.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you walk me through the logic of why we don't have the 100, at least in a couple of the scenarios, which are this council's policy?
Sure. I can talk to, well, first, I'd like to discuss the what means meeting the 100% requirements in LA. They are very heavily relying on hydrogen implementation in all their plans. That's the one thing I do know. And we know that to some level, we are going to rely on it in our plans, but we don't have the level of dispatchable generation that they still have in their portfolio. So we aren't in the same scenario that LA is in. The second, we are considering all options, and we have six scenarios that we're reviewing, and three of those scenarios were at the behest of the STAG group, which are representatives of this community. The other three are just in our best interest to be looking at. So whether or not we meet the aspirational goals of the council, which is to meet the 2035 guideline, we are going to look at that. We have to be intelligent about how we approach it, and we're going to obviously bring that information to you when we are done with our modeling.
Okay. Two things. What, two of the, two of the six scenarios have us at 100% zero carbon by 2035, is that right? Two.
I believe one of ours and one of STAG's, yes.
And four don't.
Yes.
Two do and four don't. The other thing is, our 2035 resolution, did it use the word aspiration?
It's a goal. I mean, we've gone over this a couple times.
You used the word goal.
Goal. Okay, you keep throwing in aspirational, which I find kind of a slap in the face. This is not an aspiration, this is a goal. And I think there's a difference, because aspiration gives the sense that, well, we'd like to get there maybe if we can. But that's not the sense of council. The sense of council was, we really intend to get there. Of course, goals are goals, things happen, things get in the way, technologies sometimes don't do what you want them to do, but I just don't like that this term aspirational continues to come up from GWP when it was not language we had in our resolution.
The term aspiration wasn't meant as a slap in the face. It was, in my mind, an appropriate way to cage the discussion and cover the topics. So, I apologize if you feel like it was a slap in the face, that was not my intent.
It's not appropriate framing for what we, what we are intending. Anyway, let's move on.
Okay.
It is a synonym.
House member.
It is a synonym, along with desire, hope, urge, wish, aim, ambition, expectation, objective. I see your point.
You start layering them on.
But I see your point.
Yeah, okay.
It's a strong, strong desire to reach that.
Thank you for that English lesson.
Thank you. Okay, okay. I can always count on you for that. All right.
So, some key dates in our next steps. We have, the final STAG, as I mentioned before, is on November 1. We have a presentation to the commission on the 6th, covering our results and looking for an endorsement on a particular scenario. Our last town hall meeting, we're looking at having it the week of 11/13. We haven't locked down a day in that week because we're still trying to find a location to have it. So I would say look to plan around that week timeframe to have that meeting set up. Our presentation to council, of course, and looking for our adoption for the IRP, that's on the 5th of December, and we'll be issuing our report to the CEC at the IRP deadline by the 1st of the new year. And I'm available for any additional questions.
Okay, so let's see. Any questions? Councilmember Satrian?
Well, the question I was going to ask about transmission was already asked, and Mr. Mellon gave his answer. Just, if you could maybe give me some more information on that, that seems to be the biggest challenge we have, and I think there's, there was some criticism by a letter that we had received from the Sierra Club about accurate assumptions.
Yep.
About transmission. And I know that you said that we're looking at at least five different projects, five projects?
Six projects that LA has in their plan.
Yeah, that they've been looking at for the last five years.
Yeah.
And where do those realistically stand? Because without them, everyone's going to be in quite a bind.
Yes, including LA. So there's, one of them involves another upgrade to the STS, which we are already working on. There's a couple that are involved in the system that would be very beneficial to us as long as we can get resources in the system, but from LA's standpoint, in-system can mean all the way out to Palmdale and, you know, Lancaster area. There are quite a few things that are getting installed out that way. There is one that's basically up the coast or actually in the water that we're talking about.
The wind, uh, project.
Yeah, the wind and Grayson. And the other one, the life, I can't recall it, I remember there were six, but that one, I think, was probably the least of all six that is likely to happen.
Is there a place where the public and those of us who want to see these transmission projects become a reality can put pressure? Is it, is it being held up at the state level? Is it being held up at the utility commission? Where is it that we can make our voices heard, that we need to have this in order to meet our goals for clean energy?
LA does have a transmission planning meeting. I'm trying to remember if it's open generally to the public, but we usually get an invite, you know, virtually so that we can attend, but there is an ability to attend in person. I don't know if you have to be invited to be there. That one usually involves them going over all their plans for the next 20 years, and like I said, some of those six projects have been around for at least five years in discussions, so they've, they've gone through a couple rounds. I think that's probably the most viable method. You can always go to the LA council and have a conversation directly with the City Council about the availability of transmission.
I mean, I think that we need to combine our efforts and we need to work together. I know that it hasn't been the easiest to work with our neighboring city sometimes.
Yes.
But I think it's essential that, you know, however we do it, whether it's the mayor-to-mayor channel or a few council members, along with the city manager and the water and power, approach them, but I think they need to know that this needs to be an effort in tandem. And the second item I had is in terms of, you know, our reliance on hydrogen. I know that there are concerns with hydrogen, especially in the environmental community, and rightfully so, but how does that, how does that conflict or agree with what's, what we're seeing from the federal government? I understand the Department of Energy is betting heavily.
Yes.
On hydrogen. I think the White House has allocated to the tune of many billions.
Eight billion.
Eight billion?
Eight billion, 1.6.
I thought seven billion, but eight billion?
Eight.
So, is there anything that is going to be used to clean up the hydrogen in that eight billion? Where are they, where are we expecting to get the hydrogen from? That is, and I don't know of any jurisdiction that is actually currently using hydrogen with any success. Are there any?
No, except for the IPP project in Utah, we have cleaned out some salt mines, essentially. We're building, we're building all the infrastructure to support storage for hydrogen there. That location also has a water resource, so it's simpler to do that, and we are tying in renewable resources from that general area to come through and help us convert the water to the hydrogen constituent parts. In general, with the IRA, there was $8 billion would set aside to support four hydrogen hubs, 1.6 billion every year for five years. The president just recently announced that he's endorsing eight separate hubs. I'm not sure if that means he's going to spread the eight billion around those eight, or if he's going to look to increase the resources for those eight. How those eight will take play, get installed, I don't know. It's, in general, they were talking about place of the Gulf area, I think Louisiana was one of the places they were talking about, and right around Texas. They're talking about another place in the Pacific Northwest area, they're looking at Midwest, and generally, it's like California.
Seems like a lot of these plans are in their nascent stages. There isn't really much behind it, which is a reason for pause and concern for me, but, you know, ideally, if we could have clean hydrogen, it would be better than the.
Blue or pink, yeah.
Yeah. Those are my questions for now, Mayor, thank you.
I want to call speakers, but before I do that, could, could you just help us a little bit understand what an IRP is? And I ask because I was just thinking about Councilmember Satrian's question about LA. And LA, my understanding is LA did something a little bit different. They did a 100% by 2035 study, and they spent many years trying to look at what are the possible pathways to get to 100% by 2035? What are the cost implications? What are the reliability implications? That was a little different from an IRP, or very different, I think, from an IRP. I think the IRP grew out of that, and I think the IRPs that they submit are kind of easier to develop because they already have that as their, as their baseline. But could you just explain what it is? We're required to submit something to the CEC by the end of the calendar year. What is it we're submitting? What is the CEC looking for? And what elements are we talking about that really are not necessarily part of an IRP, but part of a larger discussion on how we get to 100% by 2035?
Sure. So first, I want to address the LA 100 study that you're talking, the NREL study, right?
Right.
Right, there was a, there was a fair amount in that that was, excuse the word, but I'm going to use it, aspirational also. So it was one of those things that, these were all possibilities. LA did take the very aggressive stance to take those possibilities and put them into their integrated resource plans, which, you know, it depends on your, your background. That is, that's a tough thing to do and to meet if you don't have technologies that exist or don't have a pathway to the technologies. So I wanted to lay that out for you, that their, how their technique that they used to tie the LA 100 study to their IRP and develop IRPs from that, I don't know that it will go, go well for them if they are absolutely stuck with that. And I recognize, having talked to some of the individuals who are working on these studies and IRPs at LA, they are very concerned about having to, to be able to meet those goals because they are, were so aspirational.
And, and let me just interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
Did the CEC accept their IRP with those?
I don't know if they've accepted this year's, because I don't know that they've entered in.
Okay.
I believe they did accept last year's.
Have they accepted in the past? So based on technologies that we're really assuming will be available but aren't today, like hydrogen, maybe assuming some transmission that isn't available today? That's what they've done, and the, the CEC so far has said that's acceptable.
In one form or another, yes. Only because the, the strong amount of resources they have in their system still. They can make those aspirational goals, which a lot of their units are still natural gas base, transitioning to hydrogen. Their fallback is if the hydrogen isn't there, is to continue to burn natural gas. But they have the amount of units necessary to, to deal with their loads. We're not in the same situation.
Okay, okay, so, continue, sorry, I interrupted you.
I, I thought it was important to make that distinction, and so for our, our IRP, we have to show that through one form or another, whatever technologies we're looking for, whatever transmission we make available, whatever resources we put into our system, we can meet our load. That's essentially the goal of that report. That's why whenever we, we lay out these possibilities, we have to be very serious about whether these, whether or not these possibilities are attainable or suggestible or probable. So, and in some cases, like hydrogen, we would be looking for probability of that happening. We recognize that LA is relying very heavily on it. They are the gorilla in the room, and it's helpful to have them looking so heavily and being so, you know, focused on that, because that's a. being so focused on that, because that's a benefit to us, given our location. So it's likely we'll be looking at hydrogen as a significant source of supply for us. We unfortunately don't have the number of generation units internal to our system that they do have, so we have to look at other ways to bring that energy in, or to reduce our loads through energy efficiency and conservation, or other means. So IRP has to show that we have the ability to meet our load.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the IRP is really about reliability. That's what they want. They want to know that we can reliably meet our load with whatever reserves are required. We're not going to, we're not going to go down, we're not going to bring the rest of the grid down with us.
Yes.
They're not really looking at, of course, they don't, they're not requiring that we meet 100% any earlier than 2045.
No, they aren't.
They're not saying anything or looking at the cost equation? Although that's very important for us, but they're not, that's not what they're looking at.
That is not the issue for them. That's an issue for us.
Okay. I thought this, and I just wanted it to be clear to all of us, because we're doing, we're kind of doing a couple things at once, because we are looking at costs, because it matters to us, right?
Yes.
How we get to 2035. And we're looking at the environmental stuff, because we want to get there, we want to get to 100% earlier than the state number. So we're juggling all these things.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I am mayor, but you're taking these scenarios and building out plans, correct, that you're submitting?
The six scenarios that we're doing, I'm going to look at all of them, and we will choose one scenario for the IRP.
But you're entertaining all of these scenarios in the process of preparing the IRP?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't have questions, but I do have comments about that.
Well, let me, yeah, let me get to the speakers. We have one speaker in the House, and we have a couple callers, one. Okay, so we'll start with Jack Woolworth.
I don't know if this is going to work here. I might have to go to Plan B. A lot of Plan Bs tonight. Thanks, Mayor Dan and City Council, for the opportunity to address you tonight. The main issue here, of course, is the Integrated Resource Plan that the Stakeholders Technical Advisory Group, the STAG group, has been asked to help devise. As a member of that team, I would like to comment this subject from a different perspective that I like to call climate cancer. It's more than aspirational. Let's see, how do I get rid of this thing down here? There we go. Similar to the cancer we find in our bodies, we don't know how bad it is until we get hit by it. No one wants to believe it's getting worse, and solving it is complicated and sometimes expensive process. I should know, I've been keeping cancer at bay for the last couple of years. My experience with the STAG IRP process was like finding out how bad the cancer is and trying to understand the best options for pushing it into remission. First of all, I'd like to thank GWP, Strategen, and Ascend for working into the evenings and taking care of us during these meetings. I was a persistent pain in their sides with questions and demands. This process has been hugely educational and as well extremely frustrating. We all want this cancer gone, but some of us don't understand how immense the problem is. After several months of meetings, we still only have two scenario options, as we've discussed tonight, that follow the city council directive of 100% clean energy by 2035. We've had a dizzying dozens of facts, acronyms, and charts thrown at us week after week. As a student in this process, I've had to rely on my colleagues to help interpret it all. It hasn't been easy. Let me step backwards through our last several months. Since early September, the air has been let out of our community engagement process because of the modeling time needed for the scenarios. Our last STAG meeting was on September 6th. Since GDT was anticipating this delay, they added office hours, a kind of meeting that only three of us attended.
Attended.
Karen was one of them. Then literally two hours before the rescheduled meeting on October 11th, they postponed again. As we know, we are set for our final meeting on November 1st. And as I asked several times, to be truly engaged in this process, another meeting would have to be added.
Are you?
I don't know what that...
Close to, that means your time is up.
Was that three minutes?
It goes fast. Are you almost finished?
Well, I'd say, yeah, close.
Okay. Wrap it up real quick, please.
Oh, come on, you love my speech here.
I know, but I have to be fair.
Okay, where was I? In this metaphor, the cancer is the damage being inflicted on the climate. We all are the patient. My colleagues and I consider ourselves advocates for the patient, but who is the doctor? On September 6th, a spreadsheet was sent out with multiple tabs of information given to us with the explicit instruction, "Do not share." How can any advocate advise an ailing patient without timely information? We have been asking for this data and these assumptions since the first meeting.
Okay, Jack, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Come on, let me finish this.
I'm going to have to cut you off. Last sentence.
I crafted this just for you. The representation on the 14-member STAG meeting, STAG group was unbalanced. We had 11 men, a majority over 50, three women, three people of color, two Armenians, and only one person under 30. The disagreements were quite fierce. For our first six meetings, we were establishing the basic parameters for these scenarios. Eliminate engagement for these three...
Yeah, I can't let you keep going. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You can write to us.
I will write to you.
And this isn't, this isn't over. This is just an informational session.
I realize that. I was just giving a perspective of a STAG.
I hate to do it, we're friends, but I have to be...
Well, beyond that...
I have to be even-handed.
Beyond that, there was a presentation for how long from GWP, and you can't let a STAG member?
Let's leave it there. Yeah. There are plenty of opportunities, Jack. Okay, thank you. And our caller?
We actually have another caller as well, but our first caller is Kate Unger. Kate, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hi, everybody, do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thanks, everybody. Let me just start by giving a little bit of information about the LA process to help clarify. There was the LA 100 study, and then there was the LA Strategic Long-Term Resource Plan, which is not exactly an IRP and doesn't require CEC approval. So LA is going to do an IRP this year. The SLTRP, as it was affectionately called, studied three cases for getting to 100% by 2035, and also a reference case. The fourth case was really just a reference case, looking at the state mandate. And it's worth knowing that when the SLPRP was presented to LEDWP Commission, they wanted a concrete roadmap for being able to reach the, those scenarios, and I think Glendale should also take that very seriously. And then going back to our own IRP process, I appreciate that the approach to community input greatly improved over 2019 and improved over the original plan. We can always do better, of course, and I hope that lessons learned here will improve the next IRP, including building in much more time for providing data and information to the STAG well in advance of meetings, like Jack was talking about. Scott said that the final IRP will present a recommended portfolio. I asked at the first town hall, and GWP confirmed that GWP would decide which portfolio to recommend without the community being involved in making that decision. You have heard the community town hall results showed a clear preference to reach 100% clean energy by 2035, and we wanted multiple pathways to be studied to get to that goal. And we would like to see, and I'd like to ask, for the final IRP to include the community's preferred portfolio, to have that information there, even if the recommendation is selected by GWP. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Teresa Chang. Teresa, you're on air, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Teresa Chang, and I'm calling, representing the Sierra Club. And council members, you might refer to the letter sent by me in the Angeles chapter earlier this week. I also wanted to call in to just clarify and support Councilmember Satrian's assertion in the previous caller's assertion that LEDWP did indeed analyze three scenarios for their Strategic Long-Term Resource Plan that achieved 100% clean energy by 2035. And that was precisely because the LA City Council, their city council passed a 100% clean energy by 2035 resolution. So in parallel, it's a little bit difficult to understand why there wasn't that same translation when the Glendale City Council also passed a 100% clean energy resolution by 2035, as well as the 10% solar and storage penetration resolution by 2027. And I just wanted to note that because not all the scenarios are aligned with the council's goals and council policies, this has resulted in a real lack of clarity and visibility into what the actual trade-offs are between scenarios, which, you know, is the very, the very point of analyzing different scenarios. So it feels like this misalignment on scenarios and council policy sort of represents that GWP is already set on this idea of the 2035 goal being infuseable, even though many community members have voiced support for this goal. So you can sort of see in more detail some of our recommendations from the letter that I referred to, but I wanted to amplify some of these concerns. Thank you for the opportunity to give comment.
Thank you. Our next and final caller is Gustavo Moreno. Gustavo, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Dear Honorable Councilmembers, Public Officials, and esteemed members of the public, good evening. My name is Gustavo Moreno, and I'm an individual member of the Stakeholder Technical Advisor Group, working on the 2024 GWV Integrated Resource Plan. My opinions are my own, and I do not represent the full group, GWP, or its consultants. The city's solar projects, electrification, and renewable energy currently proposed gives residential customers a slap in the face of 54% electric rate increases by 2026, as confirmed by the proposed GWP rate increases. Solar is economically expensive because it is land-intensive and only works half the day and weather permitting. Solar is not environmentally friendly because it has a large carbon footprint. This is because 80% of them are made in countries that use coal to produce them. This dismantles the argument regarding the arbitrary and capricious social cost of carbon. The majority of solar panels are also unethical because they use forced labor to manufacture, to manufacture them. Either way, to make solar viable, they need battery storage. Storage is expensive because it only lasts 10 years. Storage has a 10% energy loss to charge and discharge them. It also loses another 3% annually due to degradation. This is more than 13% energy loss annually that goes into the ether. Storage is environmentally unfriendly because it requires enormous amounts of minerals to assemble them. Battery storage is unethical because these minerals are mined with the use of child labor. Together, solar plus battery storage can have up to a 28% larger carbon footprint than a clean natural gas plant. For these reasons, solar plus battery storage is not an economic, environmental, or ethical solution at this time. It has also been said that the alternative of thermal generation is too expensive. Sure, a brand-new Mercedes is expensive, but you can save a few dollars by buying a used one after kicking the tires. The Grayson Power Plant used lasted more than 40 years. A used, 10-year technologically advanced, reliable, flexible, and efficient clean natural gas plant has double the power than the billion-dollar blunder that is proposed, and is only $61 million. The choice is simple and obvious. Clean natural gas is the world's choice and should be Glendale's as well. Let's prevent blackouts and keep the lights on. There is still hope by repowering Grayson by using AQMD Rule 1135 before it expires in December 31st, 2023. Thank you, I respectfully yield the balance of my time.
Thank you.
All right, so any, I mean, we're not giving direction, what are we, what are we doing here? We're just...
Yeah, this is for not in file.
Okay, well, let's just, we can express our thoughts.
I mean, there's an alternative, too, that says, "Consider any other alternative not proposed by STAF." The alternative one is not to file.
Okay.
Right? So if you wanted to give direction, we could come up with a new alternative and give direction.
Okay, let's see.
Okay. I think the only thing for me would be, we do have these hefty goals that we've set. They are goals, which includes both the solar, the 100. The first scenario that you have going, and I think it would be worthwhile for us to see several scenarios, for us to be able to see the trade-offs. You are already doing the modeling. If you are only submitting one, why would we have all these other scenarios that are not in line with what this council and previous council have made as part of policy for our city? So I think, you know, if we are doing the modeling for it, then it should include at least a couple more, so we can see the trade-offs.
Okay. Six.
Right, but out of the six, you only have one here, and then another that GWP's putting together that meet our goals, correct?
To meet the 2035 goals.
The 2035, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I mean, I think it would be fair to ask for more scenarios than just those two, but I'd like to hear what you have to say and everybody else has to say about that.
Okay. Anything, Councilmember Kusakian?
None at this moment.
Comments? Anything, Councilmember DeJordi?
So I understand the modeling aspect on the resources and accumulating sufficiently. Did you say you do cost? Is it too early to look at cost issues?
We do, sorry. We do do some costing in the evaluations, yes. It's not, that's to our benefit, right? We need to understand the implications. So that, if we choose a scenario that technically means 2035, but it's, you know, a billion dollars extra, well, we'd have to roll that into the rate plan.
What's this AQMD Rule 11...
1135.
35.
Yeah, right off the top of my head, I believe it's one that allows for natural gas burning units to be installed in order to support load. If it's the same one I'm thinking of, it's the one that the governor used to install several units in the north, Turlock, I believe, some of the irrigation districts and the PUDs up in the northern area.
I mean, we've crossed that bridge already. I mean, we're not, there's no, there's no scenario that there's anything other than the Wartzillas being placed at Grayson, correct? I mean, that's, that's gone.
Yeah, the units, the facilities have pretty much been demolished. We're preparing soon, in the next month, to do the soil improvements. We will be coming back to council mid-November, seeking approval for the final costs on the balance of site EPC contract to do the install of the Wartzillas and the balance of site, which would include batteries.
So the last speaker's comments were really not relevant at this, because the time relevance is, has passed.
Yeah.
Not that we were doing that anyway, but it's, you know, we're, okay. That's all I have.
My memory, I think Mr. Young might know better, but my memory is 1135. Rule 1135 is the reason that we couldn't continue to run our older units because they didn't meet AQMD air quality standards, and we were given deadlines to decommission them. And I think, you know, potentially, we could have tried to get a, an extension on 1135. But 1135, I think, was what was shutting us down. Is that your memory?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's true. 1135 further restricted the pollution output over thermal generation. thermal generation for Knox and Sox. And essentially, what it did was it would prevent it, they didn't tell you that you can, that you have to shut it down, but they limited the restrictions so much that boilers couldn't pass the requirement. And that's going to be final on December 31. And there is no extensions on that. We knew about it for years.
Yeah.
So it was, if we remember, Alternative 8 talked about retrofitting number eight units to abide by the 1135 rule. So the 1135 rule is really reducing the pollution output over thermal generator. We would have done that. We did that on nine because nine definitely complies. Number eight could have done that with Alternative 8, and the Wartzilla engines will abide by the 1135, the new 1135 rule.
Right, right. Okay. That was what was, I mean, we knew we had that, that deadline coming up. That's why we were, we were saying we're out of time.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, the reason why we're doing multiple scenarios is because I haven't looked at the scenarios, I haven't seen the outcome, but let's just say the ideal 2035 scenario that, that council has given us direction on, if it doesn't comply with the C E C standards of being able to meet load and to meet reserves, you can't submit an I R P to the C E C that doesn't comply with those standards. So we're looking at other options so that in the event that 2035 option doesn't work, we have other options that we can submit to the C E C. It's not that we're saying, ah, well, let's not pay any attention to it. Let's just go to the 2045 option because G W P wants that. We're, we're trying to look at other, other options that are being run through the model that would abide by the standard that the C E C set for the I R P, if that makes sense.
It does.
If I may on that, one of the scenarios is the 2045, correct?
That's correct.
To meet, to meet the state standards.
That's the state standard, so.
So one of the scenarios is modeling for that.
Yes.
That's correct.
Is that not our safe space?
And that's the way, that's the way G W P looked at it. We have to abide by that. So we figured that that has to be the, has to be one that we look at.
So we have six scenarios, Mr. Young. Out of the six, one of them has that safe spot if you wanted to turn in something. I'm just asking why, out of the six, two scenarios, only, only two scenarios address all of the policies that the council has passed? Because it's hard for me to grip that because it doesn't give us the opportunity to trade off and look at what our different options are for affordability and reliability with those scenarios that we have as policies.
Sure, I, I understand. And I think that, that I was not clear. 20, 2045 is the mandate by the state. It doesn't mean that Glendale Water and Power can abide by the 2045 standard. There are cities that can abide by that standard and they have to figure out a way to do that. If we have options, it doesn't say that you're going to go to so-and-so counterparty and buy so-and-so megawatts at so-and-so price. That's not what the I R P does. The I R P says, you have available, you have available transmission space on the Pacific Northwest, we think you should look for 50 megawatts of wind. And that's as far as it goes. And then it's the responsibility of Mr. Mellon's group to actually go find that. So it doesn't specifically tell you what you have to do. It just looks at generalities, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
And, and the L A 100, all of Los Angeles is predicated on 2,600 megawatts of thermal generation miraculously turning into a hydrogen generating facility. That's how they get to 100%. So we hope that they do it because if they do it, they're probably going to bring hydrogen up to Haynes. They're probably going to bring hydrogen to Magnolia, and we're right in the way so we can get that hydrogen option. So we're, we're rooting for them. We're rooting for them so much so that I believe the I P P facility is going to be the largest facility in the world. And the domes are fabulous, the water is abundant, there's a lot of open space that we can make that hydrogen, green hydrogen. And I think the world's looking at I P P to be successful, and we're part of that and proud to be part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Young, are they getting funding for this project from the Biden administration? As I understand it, they just passed like a billion-dollar bills.
They, they are. I believe, and if they're not, they're working on getting funding to assist them in it. And, and, you know, it's a relatively new thing. The hydrogen hubs had specific places where the hydrogen was going to be. And California miraculously is all of California. There's not a specific hub there. They're looking for hubs anywhere in California and they're giving, I don't know, I think it's a billion dollars or something like that as part of the $7 billion that they have. So we are actively looking and Los Angeles is spending considerable time trying to minimize the cost because it's astronomical.
Right. The other, the other question I had was, if I may, Mr. Mayor, was Kate Unger mentioned that there was a point where the, the STAG members would, and the public would no longer have a voice in the decision. At what point does that come?
So I purposely, I, I went to one STAG to introduce myself and I purposely stayed away just so I didn't feel like I was trying to sway anybody and trying to stifle any conversation. But I believe we're going to bring you the scenarios and tell you whether they comply or not. So while we will make a recommendation, you will hear the other options. Option A doesn't comply because of this. Option B does comply. This is the cost associated with it. You'll get those options, but you'll also get my, my staff's recommendation as to which one they choose. That doesn't mean you have to choose that one. It means you, you take it for what it's worth and you can pick whichever one you want as long as it's compliant. And remember, we have to comply to that mandate with the C E C. And some people say, well, what happens if it doesn't comply? And what they'll do is they'll give it back to you and say redo it. So it isn't a matter of, well, council doesn't feel like doing it and we're not going to comply. It is a mandatory, it's a mandatory thing, so.
And can I, can I assume that that's why the STAG members agreed to 90% by 2035 in two of these scenarios and in one they agreed to 100% because of that rationale? I mean, because I'm, I'm assuming that all of the, the members of that committee wanted, their goal was 100% by 2035.
I wasn't there, but I believe, I believe everybody wants to keep the, get the environment, environment clean. So I think everybody's moving in that direction, but I would have to defer that question to Mr. Mellon because he was, he's attended all the meetings.
Okay, okay.
Yes. It's been a very interesting conversation. In fact, Jack was a very, a very good student of learning the process, but the.
Jack.
Jack.
Jack, Jeff.
Jeff, sorry. Anyways, what it came down to is, yes, they were all part of the process. And yes, they did want to look at the, the in-between stages. Primarily, they were looking at between Glendale's goals and California's requirements. That's why they kind of spread it out over that time period. They wanted to see how the models turned out and whether or not there was a more holistic approach or a possible scenario that met the needs at that in-between stage. So they were very thoughtful decisions.
Okay. So I, okay, go ahead.
The three scenarios from G W P is 2035 and the 2045 and 2045, correct? You're building out two models for 2045 and one for 2035?
No, one of the models is more focused on the affordability aspect rather than the, the conditions. But yes, we still have to meet the 2045. So yes, you're right.
So two, 2045, okay. All right. I'm going to ask one last time if there is an opportunity for us to at least have three scenarios that align with our policies. I would like to give that direction and change that alternative.
Okay, well, we have, okay, so, I don't know, if you're comfortable standing there, keep standing there. It's nice, it's nice to talk to you. So we have these six scenarios, Ascend's modeling them. We'll see the results of that modeling. And you'll be, one of the things that we came into this saying we were, what was really important was complete transparency about the underlying data that we're using. And I know that, I believe that that's all being made public except maybe for some line diagrams and things about our grid that are, that are, you know, security concerns if we, if we release them. But anything else we should be releasing, assumptions about natural gas prices, assumptions about electrification, blah, 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 right? I think that's, that's important that we're really open book so people can, you know, challenge, challenge these results if, if they feel like the, the inputs are not right.
Sure. And just so, just so council's aware, Ascend also does the modeling for Los Angeles.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, for me, oh, and one question I had in the briefings, and I just wanted you to confirm. So all the models are using the EPA's $51 a ton social cost of carbon?
So I'll address that. There's, there's three numbers. We'll talk about the $51 and we can talk about the 190. Those are EPA-recognized numbers and the 190 is the newest one. Those are, how do I say this? We, there's no obligation to pay that. Those are considerations and those are the, the dollars that we'd be looking at, how, the sensitivity studies that I mentioned. That's what we would be doing the sensitivity studies on is what would be the implication if we were to roll in the social cost of carbon at the $50, the 51, and the social costs of carbon at 190? What would that affect in the model? So we're looking at the sensitivity studies on that and Ascend is going to be doing those. Our core models are based on the actual cost of the allowances, the carbon allowances, right? And I think closing.
Around 30 or something?
30, 35, 20 was the last closing. That was August auction.
$35.
Yeah.
And those are for the cap and trade auctions. That's what we actually pay for every ton of carbon that we.
That's our actual obligation, yes.
Right, right.
And the Ascend model is looking at, they use the past data on auctions and they project forward in the forecast. So obviously, none of those models are going to be thinking that those prices are coming down in the future. They're only going to be going up. But right now, the base, like I said, in August, the last one was 3520.
Right, okay.
So if I can, so I can add to that, the cost of carbon really comes into play if you have thermal generation and you're actually economically dispatching it, right? So if the, if the, if the cost of carbon goes up and you include that into your model, then, then the cost to generate on a thermal generator becomes so high that it's prohibitive for you to do that. So you don't, you don't run the unit. Well, council gave us direction to only run our thermal generator 14% capacity factor. So the fact that it's so small of, of our ability to run the social cost of carbon, while it, it does come into play, it's not as important as if I had the ability to run those units at will.
I understand. Yeah. And you made that clear in the, in the briefing. I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, for my part, I would just, I would just say that I certainly would hope and I, that we can bring to the C E C a scenario that has us get to 100% by 2035. I would have a hard time approving one that doesn't. But I would say that, you know, I understand, we all understand that sometimes it's that last 2, 3, 5% that can be astronomically expensive. And, and of course, none of us, we're seeing already the, the resistance and the, and the, and the concern about the, the utility rate hikes we're talking about. So none of us want to see, you know, utility rates go up to a point where they're just unbearable for people. You know, we want all these things. We want the clean energy by 2035. We want reasonable rates and we have to have the reliability. So I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, you could bring something back to us and, and if it looks like, I mean, we can look at that last few percent. I think what we want to do is we want to start with the 20, 2035 and then look at some of the implications. And maybe if, you know, we have to dial that back or we have to talk about that last 5%, maybe being through recs and not actual, you know, maybe there's some other, some other way we can build flexibility into it because we don't want, you know, we don't want to like be stupid about it, right? That last 5% if it's going to, if it's going to astronomically, you know, push rates up, it's, you know, none of us are going to survive and nothing is going to work. So we want to be thoughtful about, about that. And so I, I need you to be telling us like that cost curve and where and how we play with that very expensive last little piece of the equation.
Yes.
Exactly. No, exactly. And that's why they've got two of the options at full achievement, but others with some room at 90%. And like you said, it's that incremental marginal expense that we should have that flexibility to, to deal with. And before you can deal with it, you need to see what the projections are and the, you know, the plan, you know, the, the outcomes that you, the scenarios that you run. So I agree with you.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is start with the 2035 and then let's see if we need to dial back rather than immediately jump into a 2040 or 2042. It's, it's a little bit of just slightly different approach. Oh, I just lost my train of thought on something else. But there we are. Okay.
So please note, the Integrated Resource Plan, while it looks at, looks out 20 years, you know, it's, it's very, very cloudy in 20 years. You can't really see 20 years. The original Integrated Resource Plan was to make sure that you had enough resources to meet load and reserves over the five-year period. And that's where they're really focusing on. They are looking at moving in the direction because we have aspiration, we have aspirational goals or whatever we want to call this at 2035, but we have.
Policies?
Well, that's true, but a lot of people have different, different ears. So we have 2030, 2035. We have a hard, we have a hard rule at 2045, and that's, that's pretty far away. So I guess what I was trying to get at was, as things start to develop, the next Integrated Resource Plan could come up with a process in order for us to be able to meet that relatively easy or easier than this Integrated Resource Plan. So it's really focusing on the five years and then looking out a little, little less focused.
Yeah. I guess the other thing I was going to say is, and I think you, you'll agree with this. I mean, it doesn't stop here with this I R P. We, we submit an I R P, but we need to keep looking at this 100% by 2035 question. We keep, we need to look at the different pathways, the different cost implications and, and the impacts on reliability. And I think that exercise, I don't know exactly how we do it, but I want to keep doing that. I want us to be doing that apart from the I R P so that we do have a plan that we all feel is doable, that gets us to where we want to be, that doesn't, you know, mean, you know, rate impacts that we can't stomach. So I, I just want to make sure we're going in that direction.
And power management is definitely going in that direction. We're always looking for renewable assets that are tied to our existing transmission because we have always said over the last, ever since I've come up to this podium, is we're going to use 100% of our transmission to import renewable energy, clean renewable energy, clean or renewable energy. And that's becoming a lot more difficult, right? The Pacific Northwest is keeping all their renewable energy, so we're having to find things. So Scott's team or Mr. Mellon's team is forever looking for opportunity and we try to develop that opportunity, getting involved with Los Angeles or other SCAPR members in order for us to do that. So we are doing it on a daily basis.
Okay. So what else do we need to do? Do we need?
Just to motion to note and file.
Second.
You don't want to entertain that?
No.
What, we all, we have six scenarios.
We've got it.
We have six scenarios, right? Two of them are 2035 scenarios.
Right.
Right?
One of them is affordability with 2045, the other one's just 2045.
The other one's 2045. And then the STAG has two. One is a 2040 and one is a 2042. I don't necessarily think we need to throw them away at this point. We know where we are. We've had this discussion. They're already being modeled. Let's just, we'll have it, we'll have it developed. We'll talk about them and we'll ultimately have to agree on one that we submit to the C E C. So I think.
But this is when they're going and building out the models.
But you want to add a seven?
No. I'm asking for one of them to also, so for us to have at least three scenarios where it, we're looking at all of the policies that we have.
I don't know what that third one would be. I mean, we have two that are 2035. I don't know that there's a third generation.
Can they?
I can be more specific because you can look at the, if you're, if you're doing different. different modeling, you're able to then look at, like, the trade-offs for affordability, reliability.
Well, to be clear, the, the six models are already in the works. We're already running them. And the impact of attempting to modify those or do something a little different, these were models that were specified, three of those models were specified by the community. The STAG represents that community. So, this is representative of what the community was asking for.
To be clear...
Wait, 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 Jack, can't do that, sorry. Let's, yeah, let's move, let's, let's move on. I think GWP is hearing from us. We want to see a 2035 model that works, and we've got two iterations of that.
Just, just so I'm clear, I know that, I know that we're trying to give staff the direction to move forward with the models, but I, I just want to be clear, what is it that you're asking?
They're, they're building different models and scenarios, right? For 20, for, for 20, let's say for 2035.
Uh huh.
I'd like to see more than two models and scenarios of how we get to that 2035.
So, then you want to add a seventh model?
No, I'm asking...
The models are already there. I mean, they're already running them. So, you would add an additional model. We need to tell them what that model would look like, what would be different about that model than the two we're already running.
But you're, they're running different scenarios within that 20, 2035 model, right?
No, no.
You already have two scenarios, right?
We have two scenarios that meet the 2035 profile, yes.
And what's different about those two scenarios?
Let me, let me pull up the slides.
Because if we want them to do another one, we have to have, like, what is, what does it look like?
I'm not, I'm not the expert, they should be able to tell me what the different models and scenarios would look like. I don't appreciate you laughing, Councilmember Devine.
All right.
What would you like me to add?
Mr. Mellon.
Yes.
Go ahead and compare the two, 235 scenarios.
Okay. So, the, the original 235 scenario that GWP is doing, it was just looking, what, what can we throw at it to make sure we meet the 235? We didn't have any restrictions or any focus, but it was based on what was logically available right now, especially when it's related to technologies. 2035 scenario that the STAG was looking at focused on high local resources, a much higher penetration in the solar side, and getting more into, into the system. Let's see, you know, meeting all the clean energy goals, and was looking at a higher electrification, so higher load. So, that's, that's much different. So, that was looking like, if, if we were pushing to convert as much as we could of our internal resources out away from natural gas, and go completely electrified, you have an increase in load that's associated with that, but you're also meeting that, the air quality issues.
That's maybe a possible suggestion.
So, one of the things that I would like to look at with the 2035 model is the affordability, that I'm not hearing from either one of those models, right? And so, that, that is a scenario that, within the 2035, you also incorporate affordability, especially given, you know, our conversation here today, and the rate increases we're going to have.
So, in other words, a 2035 model that solves for...
You can have it all. I mean, you can have your cake or eat it, too.
Hold on, a 2035 model that solves for lowest cost, is that, is that what you're saying?
Right, so, you're taking an...
Can you do that?
That, that would be our model. That would be the GWP 2035 model.
Yeah. The only other thing I can think of is this moderate local resources of long-duration energy storage, if you made that at 2035 instead of a 2042, you could maybe take that kind of a scenario. Would that be possible?
Not by what the STAG asked for.
Well, we're asking for it.
I understand that. I, so, I hear what the council is asking for. I also know that we were following a particular process that emphasized that STAG's involvement in developing these particular scenarios was on their own, and we went from two to three different scenarios that we gave them to represent, as representing the community, to come up with those scenarios. What is it that the council is actually asking for above beyond what GWP was already planning on giving you?
And I, Mr. Mellon, I should add that as part of modeling and analyzing those two scenarios, there will be analysis of the cost impacts and the, the possibility, or lack thereof, affordability of this plan. That's already baked into those two scenarios.
I'm just trying to accommodate Councilmember Satrion's desire for a third model that has 2035, and so I'm thinking perhaps...
When Mr. Mellon was describing the first one, affordability was not part of that.
Yeah, I don't, Mr. Mellon didn't use the word affordability.
True.
I agree. But the intention is to bring the report back to council to educate the public and the council as to the cost impacts of the two, both 2035 models. And if it's not affordable, then, in council's opinion, if it's not affordable, then we'll know that it's not affordable. And you don't have to select that scenario moving forward to be included in the, to be submitted to CEC.
The, the one that GWP is solving, is only solving for 2035, correct? It doesn't include the 10% customer solar, doesn't include reach codes?
No, no, some of that isn't included also, but it's not as deeply as STAG had asked for. So, I'm going to, I'm going to see if I can say this more correctly. So, when we run our scenarios, we are looking for a couple of things. One is reliability and affordability under the sustainability umbrella, right? Because we have a need to push towards sustainability, to reach our renewable goals, right? How can we do that in a way where we keep the lights on and make it affordable? So, those are wrapped into all the models that we run.
Right.
The 2035 model that GWP is running is focused on meeting that 2035 goal the most affordable way we can, and keeping the lights on. So, that, I think what you're asking for is already included. That's, that's the way I would say it.
Okay.
All right. Okay. So, we have...
There's a motion.
Motion, a second. So, we have, we're going to stay with the six scenarios, or are we going to run a seventh scenario?
Six.
Okay. I think, I think we're getting what we need.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Asadriyan?
Stay.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. What is next?
Our next action item is Action Item C City Attorney regarding approval of Second Amendment to City Manager Employment Agreement with Rubik Galanian to extend the term of agreement and provide for salary adjustments. One, motion approving Second Amendment to City Manager Employment Agreement. Two, resolution establishing classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale City Manager.
Please. All right. Who, do you take this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And just for the record, Mr. Galanian stepped out and accused himself on this item, obviously. So, the...
He never got to vote. He never got to vote anyway.
He does have to step down. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city manager was appointed in 2021. At that time, the council approved a three-year employment agreement pursuant to the terms of the employment agreement, which will expire in March of 2024. The council and Mr. Galanian commenced negotiations on an extension pursuant to the terms of the agreement. And then after several discussions, come to terms on a proposed employment agreement, Second Amendment, which would extend the contract by another three years to March of 2027, would increase his salary effective November 5th to $29,225 per month, or $350,700 per year. And then effective July 1, 2025, would adjust his salary to $31,325 per month, or $375,900 per year. So, that, those are the proposed terms of the employment agreement, as, as relayed to me by the mayor. And that, that Second Amendment is before you tonight for consideration. The two items are a motion to approve the amendment, as well as a resolution to amend the, or establishing the classification titles and compensation, so it would adjust his range to be in line with the agreement. So, with that, I will return back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Any cards?
No cards or callers.
Okay.
Bomb of Look items?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Very good. Next item, please.
Next item, Item Number Nine Hearings, Item A, Community Development Regarding 926 Hillcroft Road, Consideration of Glendale Register Nomination and Requests for Mills Act Historic Property Contract. One, Resolution to Designate the Residential Property at 926 Hillcroft Road as a Historic Resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. As the WR Burnett House and authorize the city manager to enter into Mills Act Historical Property Contract with property owner. Two, Motion to Deny the Request of the Property Owner to Designate the Residential Property at 926 Hillcroft Road as Historic Resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing, so I will open the hearing at 8:02 PM and turn it over to Mr. Galanian.
I'm going, it's Jay Platt's show.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Mr. Platt.
Hello. 926 Hillcroft Road, we have some slides, I assume those are coming up, is a Spanish Colonial Revival house in the foothills of the Verdugo Mountains, in the Bellhurst Hillslopes area, near one of our pending historic districts. And it's an interesting house. It was built in 1929, and let me get the slide up showing here, here's the location, above Rossmoyn there. And from the street, it looks like a one-story house. It's on a steep slope, so we have a second floor that goes down the hill, and it's a two-story house on the rear facade. This is a different kind of nomination, because while the architecture is nice, and it was designed by an architect of talent named Arlo Sedgley, it's, the focus is really on William R. WR Burnett, who was a very, you know, major author, starting in the 20s, 30s, 40s, and his career kept going into the 60s and 70s. But he's famous especially for kind of creating the gangster novel, and then the gangster cycle of films that was really important in film history in the post-depression era. And Little Caesar is probably his most famous work. Here's a picture of WR, couple of pictures, kind of a tough character, and he wrote tough books and tough screenplays. And so, here are some covers of the books he wrote. If you're a film buff or into this kind of stuff, High Sierra, Little Caesar, The Asphalt Jungle are all major works, all of which were turned into films. He wrote the screenplays for many films. He was nominated for an Academy Award for Wake Island, which he wrote while he was living on Hillcroft Road. And the house itself has, it's, like I said, it's a nice Spanish colonial house. It's had some additions put on the back, including a double-height, a double-height patio area, but it still has a lot of original features, including you can see the original front doors and fixtures, the arcaded columns, or the arcaded arches at the front facade. The side facades are relatively modest, but that's true of many houses. And then here's the rear facade, where you can see the double-height patio area that was added. So, you can picture this was originally an L-shaped house, and they filled in the notch of the L with this patio. When the commission looked at, the Historic Preservation Commission looked at this house, they voted four to one to recommend that council designate the house as the WR Burnett House, focusing on criterion two, which is our criterion that establishes that places that are associated with important figures in history can be designated, and the Mills Act can be given to those properties, because they will require ongoing maintenance. The commission also identified several features of the house that have been changed over the years, and recommended conditions to be part of the Mills Act contract that would bring the house closer to the appearance it had when the Burnettes lived in the house. So, this photo that you're looking at here shows a wrought iron fence that's covered with some plants that would be removed as part of the Mills Act contract. That would open up the front facade of the house to visibility from the street, and I think that's important when we're trying to let people know that someone of significance lived in a place in Glendale. This brick column that you see at the arches would be removed, that was a later addition, and it hopefully would reveal what was originally under the arcade that held up those arches. And if it didn't, we would work to develop an appropriate treatment for that area. There's also this funny kind of pebble paving that was installed more recently in the area under the arcade at the front porch. That would be removed and replaced with a more appropriate concrete-finished paving material. The garage door has been replaced. The commission asked that that be replaced again with a wood door that's more appropriate to the design of the house. And there are a few windows around the house, some vinyl windows have been installed. So, the house has a number of its original windows, and we would use those as a model to bring back the appearance. So, the goal, even though the house isn't super architecturally significant, is still to bring back the appearance to what it would have looked like as closely as possible during the time that the, Mr. Burnett was living in the house, writing in the house, and contributing a lot to kind of popular culture and movie culture. So, here are the, the conditions. I think I captured all of them in looking over the slides. Yes, so there are five conditions recommended as part of the Mills Act contract. And if you have any questions, I'm available, the owners of the house are also here if you have any questions.
Okay. Let's start with, just questions around the table.
Well, I just have a question.
If they're just clarifying questions.
Oh, it's kind of one of my typical, but I'll let everyone else go before, before I get it.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Let, let me go to the public now. I have Neil Collier, Mr. Collier is the owner of the property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Why don't you come up? Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for allowing me to speak. Really appreciate Jay's input, it's been a very long process. My wife, Tracy, and I, who's here, have been 25-year residents of Glendale, have real passion and pride in living in this community, and we were thrilled when we were able to purchase this house a few years ago, and came to find out that this famous author had lived there, and upon further research, found that he was a very prominent figure in Hollywood, as you can, as you've learned. And it just made us want to be able to recognize him. And having lived in Glendale a long time, we've noticed a lot of homes that are on the Glendale Register, and always dreamed of having a home that could, you know, be placed in that same company, and this was one that we felt very strongly would be hopefully eligible for that designation. And to Jay's point, we are absolutely committed to restoring the home as best as we possibly can. A lot of those renovations were done prior to us buying the house, and we don't, we're much more purist when it comes to architectural integrity, so we're very happy to work with the city to try to get the house back to as close to its original condition as possible. So, again, we thank everybody here for their consideration, and, and hope we're able to get approval. Thank you.
I have a question, I have a question for him.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. So, you were not residents when the backside of the house was built?
Correct, yeah, that was the previous owner. He was in the music business, and he had lived there for about 20 years himself. There were a few other owners prior to him, but not for nearly as long, and he, his family had put that in, and also had made the alterations in the front facade as well. So, we absolutely want to kind of restore the more traditional Spanish-style elements to the front and the sides, and also the windows, and, you know, essentially restore it to its former glory.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? No, I think that's good. We have one other speaker that we'll call up, and that is Alan Durham.
Mayor Botman, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham. I watched the Historic Preservation Commission meeting when they were discussing this, and Jay made an extensive presentation. And I support adding this to the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. I think it's important to recognize, you know, historical figures such as... I think it's important to recognize, you know, historical figures such as writers, artists, people in the film industry, and of course, WR Burnett was both a novelist and a screenwriter. And unlike most novelist, he was able to write the screenplays for several of his films, at least, I would say at least three or four classic films. And, and this is really being done, put on the register because of his living there for 15 years and writing novels and screenplays in this house. So I just wanted to, it's not as if he rented it for two years and then moved out of Glendale. And he reminds me of some other Southern California writers like Raymond Chandler or James M. Cain, and had they lived here, I'm sure we would designate homes that they occupied for a significant amount of time as historic resources. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's.
Mayor Botman, we have a caller.
Wait, okay.
We have Fernando, roll down. Fernando, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and then the council. I'd like to see more historical places here in Glendale, and I actually like to see more tourism here in Glendale, but I am going to ask one favor. If you plan to vote on the place, as it's a historical house, and it looks beautiful and all, do me one favor, please, and I mean one favor. Have Beeline extend to those historical places, just like, just like in LA with those, those LA Department of Transportation buses that they have. Extend Beeline buses to go to historical places. I'd like to see, like, to see that happen. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna go through the idea of making historical houses, make sure Beeline at least extends for some of us who are disabled into those areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I guess, where do we go with this? We'll take some comments, I think Councilmember Najarian has.
It's a very nice house. I like the architecture. But Jay, okay, criterion two, we're not, we're not voting on this because it's a prime example or exquisite example of the architecture.
Right.
Criterion two, the property must be associated with a person, or persons, or groups who significantly contributed to the history of the nation, the state, the region, or the city, and retains historic integrity. So Mr. Kasakian, in several meetings before, sort of joked about this and alluded to it. But would his house be significant under criteria two? And I don't know where he lives, and I assume it's got some, it hasn't been molested in any way, the home.
I think we.
I mean, long-term, long-term, community activist, elected official, council member, motor vehicle board of et cetera, DM, MWD, why shouldn't his house qualify for that? And do we have to wait till he dies to have it qualify as a Mills Act? I guess my point is that this criterion two is really broad. I think any one of us up here would be able to qualify under contributing to the history of the city. So I have a problem with that criteria. I don't know whose criterion it is, National Historic Resources or whatever it might be. But don't you think that's kind of broad? And I have a problem with that. My house should never qualify for a Mills Act. But if you argue and say, no, it should be, then what am I waiting for? Let me get my application in right now. I mean, I've been around here many, many years, and I've contributed, it doesn't say in a good way or a bad way, it says contributed. I'm on a regional board, airport authority, metro, et cetera, et cetera. Who's to deny me?
The criteria.
The gentleman in question is a national figure, I get that, you know, a, an author, but come on, Jay.
The criteria that we use are the same as the National Register criteria, to put things on the National Register of Historic Places, they're the same as the California Register, they're commonly accepted criteria in the preservation field, they're purposefully broadly drawn to allow the umbrella of potential historic meaning to encompass a lot of possible people or places. Generally, we do wait for someone's career to be over, or a lot, a lot of it.
Is that a hint, Mr. Platt?
You need to have some context before you can evaluate whether someone has contributed significantly to history. Burnett's contribution is pretty clear, when you, when you look him up on the internet, you'll find there are a lot of articles, a lot of film people write about him, people use his books in college classes about popular culture and popular literature. I think he has passed that mark. All of you may pass that mark, but we don't know yet.
I mean, you get my point, so.
It's aspirational for his.
If you were to look up the Glendale, Google my name in the Glendale News Press, I would bet my name appears more often than Mr. Burnett's.
No doubt.
Although you've got those different tiers, you've got national, regional, state, and then city. I just think that's a broad, I mean, I guess my point is, it's just a very broad criterion that, that we need, just, we need to keep an eye on. I don't know. I'm not going to object to this, this particular home, but you can see, you know, the slippery slope of potential applicants. Who do we turn the applications?
The council has denied applications like this, where an applicant said, oh, the owner was significant, and you didn't agree with that assessment, and you've denied applications that even made it through, I can't even remember, it was on Mountain Street, and it was a guy who was significant in early, well, he was said to be significant in early television history.
I think so. I remember that. I remember that.
Certainly not someone we'd heard of before, so.
But you don't dismiss it out of hand, right? I mean, this is, because it's such a broad criteria, you would pass it on to the commission?
Sure, yeah. I've even had applications come in where the story wasn't made, that they didn't make the case very well. In one case, a house on Imperial Drive, I said, listen, if you want to move forward, why don't you beef up your research? They did, and found that this guy, can't remember his first name, Wellman, who is a significant figure in banking history, and in Glendale, and in Republican Party circles and political circles, when they pulled all that research together, we were able to say, hey, this actually is a compelling reason to designate the house, which was also a nice house, but not individually super significant.
Okay, thanks for letting me get that off my chest. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe this is an age thing, I don't know, and I don't want to be politically incorrect, but when I saw that he had written High Sierra, Little Caesar, The Asphalt Jungle, Scarface, Wake, I mean, these are incredible, incredible books, novels, movies, nominated for an Academy Award, I just think he's, that he is well, this really does deserve this special, this criterion number, what is it? Three? Two? Two. I was up at the house, and I just want to say to the caller who's requesting transportation to the historic houses, that you can hardly, he's probably never been on Hillcroft, I happened to drive up there yesterday, and you can hardly get a car up there, I mean, the streets are, right? It's almost like Adams Hill, and especially when cars are parked on the side, so I don't think Beeline is going to be going up there, unfortunately. I do like, I have to say, I do like the conditions for the Mills Act that the commission put on this house. I don't know if it's proper for me to do this, but I'm just going to make a suggestion, you can take it or leave it, but I, you know, if, I looked at the back of the house, and the arch, arches in the back, and then they have little, they have sconces on each arch, and I was thinking that when you take off the, what's it called, the veneer in the front, that sconces might be beautiful, and especially after you take out the hedges and the fence, and you can actually see the house from the street, because then you'll have beautiful curb appeal. And so I would, I would go along with the historic commission and approve the historic designation and the Mills Act for this house.
I have not. I'll get the comments, and then I'll close the hearing, and then we'll have a vote, motions. Okay. Councilmember Satra?
How long did the author, Mr. Burnett, live in the home?
About 15 years. A lot of his significant work was done there.
I like the idea of recognizing, and I would thank you for those compliments, Mr. Najarian, of trying to designate my home as historic, but I think that, you know, I haven't done anything near what Mr. Burnett had done, I don't know if any of us have. Certainly, as Councilmember Divine mentioned, he may not have specifically contributed to Glendale history, but I think in terms of what makes Southern California significant in the eyes of the world, in the sense of the entertainment industry, we're seeing currently the impact of the SAG-AFTRA strike on the, on the local economy and the global economy. And so, yes, I don't know what was being discussed.
We're agreeing, no, no, we're just.
No, no, no.
With your analysis.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just not sure what was.
We're actually remembering a former council member who was suggesting that his house be a historic register.
All right, that's fine. So, well, I lost my train of thought, but I would just say, well, what I was, wanted to say that, is that in terms of his contributions to Hollywood through his writings, and the impact that Hollywood has had, we say Hollywood, and we all know what Hollywood means, when in actuality it's a physical geographical location, but talk about Hollywood, everyone's minds immediately go to the entertainment industry and all the great films that have shaped not just American culture, but world culture. Certainly, he had a significant role in this, so I would be supportive of the designation.
Councilmember Satra?
Can you designate condos?
There's no reason, an individual condo or the complex?
No, no, if, say, under criteria two, someone lived in a condo, can you get a Mills Act for a condo?
Yeah, there was an apartment building that Charles Bukowski, the writer, lived in in Los Angeles, and that was designated in LA. So the building was designated because he was in one apartment, so it's possible.
Okay. I think the, so I support this, but I do have a comment, and this is something I spoke to Jay about yesterday. You know, I think especially with the second criteria, looking at how we also inform the larger public of this designation. I know that over the years, when I've done road trips, I've liked going and seeing quirky historical, you know, landmarks and so forth, that perhaps wouldn't be on your regular itinerary, but, you know, people's homes and whatnot. So I know we're not doing anything for tourism, but I don't know how we incorporate these kinds of designations where somewhere out there in the world, someone knows that this home belonged, and if they have that appetite to come see it, at least from the outside, then it's somewhere out there versus just as a Mills Act designation. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, and I support this, and I had some of the same questions that Councilmember Najarian brought up. I was a little bit skeptical at first, but as I, through the briefing, heard from Jay and, and read about him a little bit, I agree. But I also do think maybe you'll get the general message from us that, you know, we do worry a little bit about the slippery slope, and so keep your, keep your foot firmly planted there so that we aren't, you know, finding that we're getting more and more, or any, any of these coming to us that are kind of very borderline. I don't, you know, I don't know that they would get through the Historic Preservation Commission, but certainly want to make sure that we're doing these, you know, few and far between.
Mm-hmm.
But with that, I'll close the hearing at 8:26 PM, and I will entertain a motion.
I will move the item to designate the residential property at 926 Hillcroft Road as a historic resource, and may enter into Mills Act historical property contract with the property owner.
Okay, is there a second? And a second from Councilwoman Satra? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes.
Thank you, and what's next?
Our second hearing is committee development regarding Glendale Central Library, 222 East Harvard Street, consideration of Glendale Register nomination. One, resolution to designate the Glendale Central Library as a historic resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. Two, motion to deny the designation of the Glendale Central Library as a historic resource in the Glendale Register of Historic Resources.
Okay, and this is also a hearing?
Yes.
Is that right? So I'll open this hearing at 8:27 PM, and do I turn it right over to Jay? Okay, Mr. Platt.
Okay, we have slides for this one, obviously. This is a little bit different, city-owned property, so we're not talking Mills Act, we're just talking about Glendale Register. Central Library is, you know, kind of the heart of certain aspects of the city, and has been even before this building was built, in terms of the importance of libraries in communities. It's a building that was built in 19, or finished in 1973, opened in March of that year, so it's the 50th anniversary of the library opening this year. And it was designed in the brutalist style, which is a hard style for people to love. And around the world, this has become a popular style, starting after World War II, and in the 50s, it was developed mainly in England, and then it kind of spread from there. And in some people's opinion, this is a great example of brutalism, and you can, and it also went through a major renovation that was vetted by the Historic Preservation Commission, so the new entrances that were added show that a big blocky concrete building like this is actually more flexible than it looks, and can change with the times, and can accommodate new library uses and new members of the community to come use it as kind of a living room slash community hub, as well as more traditional library. It was designed by Welton Beckett Associates, specifically by Marvin Taff, who was one of their project architects. Welton Beckett was a huge firm, the biggest in the world at one point, based in Los Angeles. Among their works, Capitol Records, the Sidorama Dome, the Music Center, Santa Monica Civic Auditorium, if you've been to Disney World, the Contemporary Hotel that the monorail shoots through, a major firm. And while Welton Beckett himself was dead by the time this was designed, the firm continued on, and Marvin Taff, who's still with us, continued his career doing interesting kind of modernist works on a kind of a smaller scale. So on the right, you have his house and another house that he designed, just to give some context, to show he was a very flexible designer. When we say that this is a brutalist-style building, a lot of people think, well, that's horrible, why, why would you say this is brutal? Why is it, but the word is kind of a funny one, because it comes from the fact that the building is made of unfinished concrete. So I show a picture of concrete here from the wall of the building, because in French, raw concrete, unfinished concrete is called béton brut, brut means raw, and brutalism comes from that kind of, that language. It's a style, like I said, that proliferated around the world. Here are some examples that you can see. Some people love it, some people don't, but it is a major style in world architectural history, and I think it's great that we have kind of a world-class, certainly a US-class caliber building here in Glendale. It's also fragile, because in some jurisdictions, people don't appreciate it the way I hope we're going to be able to appreciate it. The Historic Preservation Commission voted unanimously to recommend supporting it, but we've lost examples around the country, around the world. The one on the left, top and bottom, is one we lost on Wilshire Boulevard in Los Angeles a few years ago. When you look at the library, again, it's only got concrete and glass as the primary materials that you look at, but when you really focus on it, it's got a lot going on. Every facade is different, there's a lot of movement, and the way the building's designed, when you look at the outside of the building, you can see sort of what's happening on the inside. So you've got the great double-height central, central reading room, central welcoming area, that we have the new entrances going into. We created the new entry plaza to bring a focus point to that, to make it more porous to the community, bring people in from Brand Boulevard, make it more noticeable. The big windowless box up there is the children's room, and so they had some back-of-house area, so that stands out as a different space. had some back-of-house area, so that stands out as a different space. The bumps sticking out from the side of the building are the study carrels, again, giving some definition on the outside to what the use is on the inside. And as you move around the building, it's endlessly shifting. Every facade is different, even the back of the building is interesting. And then this is the area facing Central Park. That's now going to face the Armenian-American Museum. And again, you see a change on the second floor there where the executive offices used to be. That's being remodeled into the teen space. So, this is the south facade. And then coming around to the east side, you've got this great stairway that wraps around the elevator tower, again, giving new definition, kind of new geometries to the building that's ever-changing as you walk around it. So, the Historic Preservation Commission felt that this was, you know, a really, really good example of brutalism, a really great asset to the city, took into account the changes on the inside as a public building. The interior is also included as part of the designation. And all of the work that's happened so far has been reviewed by HPC, and we've had consultants on the big project for the two entrances. HPC's also reviewed changes that are proposed. Here's the main reading room in the center, the double-height space. On the left, you see the, kind of a lounge that used to be the executive offices. That's going to be turned into a teen space that HPC reviewed the changes. So, again, just because the building's getting designated, it's not frozen in time. There's flexibility on a building of this scale to kind of make some significant changes. The children's reading room is also going to be completely remodeled as part of a current project. Here are the study carrels with the great windows that open to the outside, bringing light in and kind of these kind of interesting views. The new stairway was installed to kind of make it a more functional building than it was when it was originally designed, again, reflecting kind of new uses, trying to bring people into the building more easily. And then, just in terms of its history, this is the original Carnegie Library that was built down the street on Harvard. And this ultimately was expanded several times, but the library was very popular over the years, and it no longer was sufficient for the city. So, the new building was built. The original library was supported by the Women of the Tuesday Afternoon Club, so there's an interesting history about how libraries became a major component of Glendale's history. Alma Danford was the city's first librarian, so we want to just kind of mention the people who've been involved in the library system over the years. And then, just as a reminder, this is where the old Union High School was, the current site of Central Park, the Armenian Museum, and the library was where Glendale's original high school was. So, this kind of brings the story all the way around. We have a major work of brutalist architecture for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'm right here.
I have a, what happened to these buildings? What happened to this Union High School building?
Union High School was damaged in the Long Beach earthquake. That's why we have Central Park, we had Central Park and still have part of Central Park. It was torn down because it was so badly damaged.
Oh, no.
The Carnegie Library, I'm not sure what that exact story was, why it was torn down, but it was obviously not functioning as a library anymore.
Wow. Those were gorgeous buildings, huh?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
I actually have a question. The Municipal Services Building, is that brutalist?
It's kind of a mix. We kind of said the bottom part is brutalist, but the upper part, and this was in a survey, so it wasn't just us saying that, the upper part's a style called neo-formalist, if you want to get all architected. So...
That's not coming up for historical?
No, that's Glendale Register number 100. So...
Oh, it is already?
Yeah, it's already designated. Yeah, years ago, we designated that.
Okay, okay, okay. Maybe I knew that and it was in the back of my mind. Okay.
Well, you know, I'm really, I'm ready to move this, this item.
Let's just see any other, we do have actually a comment card.
Okay, let's hear it.
Any other questions from my colleagues? No, then we'll hear from Alan Dish. And I'm curious to see how he connects Trotsky to the Central Library.
Alan Dish, good evening. Am I, I'm here because, well, I love the library building because it's brutalist, because I'm Armenian, no? Like, looking at many of these examples of brutalism, I couldn't help but remember my own little country of Armenia, whatever. My question, my problem is this, of course. You remember, I requested the eastern side door to be reopened. Mr. Jay, it was a wonderful presentation, of course. So, this is my concern. The, again, we want to repedestrianize the city and so on and so on. I really think the eastern side door should be reopened. You remember, I even compared it maybe in a distasteful way to the closure of the eastern door, to Armenia's eastern route closure, to Artsakh. Now, of course, I just want to say this, and I'll tie it to the building next door, too. The library, north and south, is open, the directions, like, north to Artsakh Street, south. You remember, I said this, okay, very briefly. East is closed, or it was blockaded recently. You know what's interesting? The west, because the library's west has these wonderful windows which open towards Americana, no, which is ours but not really ours. It's, it belongs to Caruso. In the same way, Armenia's west is closed, you know, except it has wonderful views of Mount Ararat, which is, again, ours but not really ours. Let me just say this. Why I love the fact, Mr. Botman, I love the fact that you mentioned the building next door, no? Because I also thought, I was under the impression this is a brutalist building. Let me briefly praise the building next door, and then I will go back to my seat. But did you notice, walking into the building next door, the municipal building, of course, that stands on four legs, did you notice, walking into the elevator, it says G for ground floor? Now, most elevators in the US are not like this. You enter the first floor, it says one. Whereas in Europe, even in Canada, I was there, Latin America, they start with ground floor. And now you will say why. My favorite philosopher, Slavoj Zizek, says that in Europe, they know, to start counting, you need some kind of shared base, I don't know, some common norms, blah, blah, you know. Whereas in America, we're arrogant. We think we can just start counting from one. But that's the beauty, again. The building next door, built in 1976, has an elevator which begins with ground, zero. And it is for these reasons also that I like historic districts and historic buildings. Please, the only way I think we can get out of some of the problems today is through books, and I love books. So, praise to the library. Thank you.
Good timing. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one caller.
We have a caller?
Yes. Our caller is Fernando Roldan. Fernando, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The library, I grew up most of my life with that library, reading books, reading, and seeing changes. I mean, it really is historically rich. And again, as I mentioned in my previous comments, we need to have Glendale become a powerhouse in terms of tourism. And, you know, if we're going to make the library a historical landmark, at least give me one other favorite. Buy or get some rare books and put them on a display kit. Show the library that we are. I mean, show that we have a better library than the one in downtown LA. I mean, that's my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all.
Okay, then, as pro tem, I will close the hearing. Any objections to move forward with this? Has everyone had a chance to comment? Okay.
I'll move the item.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
How far did he go?
Just to the back.
I love our library. Where's Mr. Dish? Why is this, the, one of the doors closed? Let's talk about that.
Sure. When, with the development of the Museum of Neon Art and the little passageway next to that that leads to the Americana, there was an idea from an urban design perspective that it would be great to figure out ways to kind of create a more porous and recognizable path between the downtown Brand Boulevard and the library and Central Park, and now the museum that's coming. So, the goal was to kind of open up both sides, the south toward the park and the museum, the north toward Maryland or along Harvard toward Brand. And when the, when the door was on the east, it was really, there was kind of a car drop-off there, so it was really a vehicle kind of area. There was a nice depressed sitting area around a tree, and now we don't have to do this. And if I can add, if I can add to that.
We've been stalling until you get back. We're ready to vote.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, everything's, roll call.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Yes.
Councilmembers Asadrian? Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so, is it move on to oral communication?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet. We have to...
There is discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. Request a Councilmember Asatrian's request for a report on the structure of the Friendship and Sister Cities Program.
Move it.
Second.
Do we take roll on this?
Can I make comments?
Can Councilwoman Asatrian first explain what?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I...
I'm going to keep it really short, I promise.
The only reason I second it is because I believe that you gave us an explanation when you had asked for it, but I'm happy to hear.
So, just a couple of things I would like for the report to include. One is ways of reporting to the council might be on an annual basis of the status of all the sister cities and friendship cities. And then, one of the biggest issues that I saw, and this really came from when I went to Armenia, when I was going to Rapan and Gumri, I went to staff and asked for, you know, who we met with, what the history was, and nothing's ever passed on to staff. So, it kind of carries with mayors or whoever the council member has been. And, you know, we don't get any reports, so I think it would just be beneficial for all of us. And then, how people can actually sign up to be part of these sister city associations. And the last piece is the city's involvement with the sister city association. So, for example, Rapan's status no longer exists as a nonprofit. For example, I know that for years, I was trying to get a hold of somebody that was on the previous board for us to, but if that person leaves and there's no point person from the city, then, you know, we have no access to be able to pass that on to a new group of people. So, that's as short as I could.
That's actually helpful. Thank you.
Okay, now, can I just add one teeny thing, which is, as part of this, I think we have some sister cities or friendly cities that are kind of, there's no activity, and we should have a process for kind of delisting them or whatever you want to call it, if we're no longer doing anything with that relationship.
Or to the contrary, finding out ways to encourage support from the community to make them successful.
How about with that report, just a status of each one that we have, and then we can decide.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to go forward with that.
Just to put it on the agenda for...
Yeah, we do a roll call.
Three of you support it.
Okay. Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine? Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay. And our next item?
Our next item is Item B, Councilmember Asatrian's request for a report on the Glendale Municipal Code Requirements for Recycling Requirements for New Multifamily Construction.
I'm not looking for a report. I'd like for us to consider looking at adding some codes to future constructions that incorporate recycling for multifamily and commercial. I'm not sure if that's going to be incorporated into what Mr. Calvert's going to be bringing back, but I know West Hollywood has a separate, go ahead. I feel like you need, you want to say something.
I can wait.
You've been wanting to say something.
No, we, Councilwoman Asatrian, as a matter of fact, we do have that stipulation, the provision in our code for new buildings, but as part of Mr. Calvert's report on the status of our zoning codes and streamlining, he will underscore that and bring to council's attention.
New condo buildings require, like, two trash chutes or three trash chutes, whatever our requirements are for...
Yes, Mayor Botman, members of the city council. We have actually produced a memo about this previously. I believe this might have been before you had joined council. We can provide that to you specifically so that you can see the requirements on that. There are actually state requirements and rules that all new construction has to provide a recycling chute. There has to be a specific room for it. The intent behind those rules was to encourage people to recycle and make it easier. Before, people could just have a room down in the lower level of the building. State law now requires a chute to be put in place for recycling. Organics is a little bit different. As we kind of highlight in that memo, a chute's not required mainly because most cities have not figured out how to deal with the potential rodent or insect problems that would emerge from that. I can provide that memo to you so you can see what those rules are, but there is very specific requirements on dimensions, the location of it, the size of it, access to it, things like that.
Okay.
And so, after getting that memo, if we want to, if we want to bring that back for some potential code changes, how would we do that?
If I could recommend, a good time would be November 7. We are going to bring a discussion forward on changes or improvements to our entitlement process that includes the code. That may be a good time to incorporate that request when we do that work. Do note for that that you cannot be more restrictive than the state requirement, so.
Not be more restrictive than the state.
Excuse me, not more restrictive, but less restrictive, excuse me, yes.
Okay. But we'll get that memo before, before then.
Correct. I'll provide that memo tomorrow to the city council.
Okay. And on that note, I have to say, I opened my door today, and there it was, the green organic bin. And it had it in front of every unit in my building.
And I will, let me say one thing without belaboring the point, but we had briefings with somebody who's developing a large multifamily housing project here in Glendale, and they were describing how they're handling it. And they had a system where you push a button and there's a, there's a basket at the bottom that moves. So, they have three compartments for organics, recycle, and regular municipal solid waste. So, it's one chute, but apparently there's a way to get it separated into three. And those are some of the solutions, I think, we're looking for, right? Okay. So, do we vote on that, or is that just a memo? What do we need to do?
Sounds like you don't want the report right now.
No, let me take a look at the memo.
Getting the memo, okay. And then, our last one was from Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry.
Last item is Councilmember Kasakian's request for a resolution supporting Senator Alex Paredes and Congresswoman Judy Chu's efforts urging the Biden administration to expand the boundary of the San Gabriel Mountain National Monument.
This was something that, actually, San Gabriel National Monument, San Gabriel Mountain National Monument, I believe, was established by President Obama. There's been efforts to expand it because there is a lot of open space in which there is important wildlife. It is an incredibly significant portion of the local ecosystem, as well as it has a lot of history associated with it. I believe the Mount Wilson Observatory is up there. I think, given that we are beneficiaries of this incredible open space right on the border of our city and right, I think maybe even parts of our city, may encroach on it, I would like us to support this effort.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, let's do a roll call on that.
Okay. Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay.
Our next item is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, we have 10 cards. Do we have anyone on the phone?
No callers.
Okay, so, I'm going to, we'll call the 10, give two minutes, three minutes, and then we'll, we won't take any, any callers, because that's already a lot. Okay, we'll start with Vladimir Arutunian.
Mayor Botman, just to clarify, you're giving three minutes to each?
No, 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 no. Oh, I said, I said three minutes, and then we'll cut off taking any potential calls.
Got it. Thanks.
No, five minutes is oral communications.
Thank you.
That's what I was told, council. So, we have five minutes. Dear council and constituents of City of Glendale, my name is Vlad Arutunian. I'm joined by Sergey Yegana, the owner of the property in Glendale. I'm a former plan checker for City of Los Angeles. I worked for nearly 10... I worked for nearly 10 years, and in my tenure, I've heard a lot of horror stories about the plan check process in Glendale. In the past nearly two years, I've lived every one of those horrors. In January, it'll be two years since Sergey hired me to do a simple job on his property. The project was initiated by the fact that his existing roof is of original wood shake construction and is in dire need of replacement. The owner also decided to do a small addition and enclose a patio surrounding his kitchen. Simple projects like this, I have personally reviewed by the thousands. Never did I think that I would be standing in front of you nearly two years later. In August of last year, I met with senior planner Jay Platt. I explained to him that as a structural engineer, I need to comply with whatever architectural requirements they impose on me to avoid going to a lengthy designer review board process because existing roof conditions are very poor and in dire need of replacement. Very quickly, I realized that Mr. Platt is misinterpreting well-defined code sections clearly defined in your zoning code and utilizing the vagueness of the comprehensive design guidelines governing these residential designs to unnecessarily complicate the process. After several failed attempts to convince Mr. Platt of his misinterpretations of what a well-defined building setback is, it was agreed that the design will be revised just to move things along. All of Mr. Platt's vaguely defined design recommendations were incorporated, and the plans were submitted. After a long review, we got a response that the revised design cannot be supported, and we were forced to go to the design review board. What a colossal waste of time. Shortly after, due to a very long, due to a very strong rainy season, my client's ceiling collapsed in several locations. At this point, I had used my vast network and dug further into what is the cause of the worst bureaucracy I have ever witnessed. Several people told me to reach out to city council to intervene. I was also warned not to directly involve Mr. Platt in any communications with city council since he is very vindictive in nature. I followed the advice and sent an email to all of you and CC the newly appointed community development director Bradley Calvert. I explained the situation and attached photos of the collapsed ceiling due to the rain. I was told that Mr. Calvert would reach out to me shortly and would work with us to find a resolution. After months of no response, I elevated this issue to the city attorney, Mr. Garcia. I had told him at this point that if the reason why we're not getting a response, my client, sorry, after no, after months of no response, I elevated the issue to city attorney, Mr. Garcia. I had told him at this point that if the city's reservation is openly acknowledging Mr. Platt's ineptitude in interpreting the city code, is the reason why we're not getting a response? My client is willing to not seek legal action if those acknowledgements were made. The entirety of this nightmare, I had pushed my client back from suing the city because innocent taxpayers aren't at fault, and suing a city is a very lengthy and costly process. When I finally did get a meeting arranged by Mr. Calvert, Mr. Platt led it. Mr. Platt took advantage of Mr. Calvert's indifference to his bureaucratic approach and exacted his revenge against us for questioning his tyrannical rule. When pressed for clarification and for an answer as to why we were still subject to the subjective requirements imposed by Mr. Platt, even though we had complied with all of his requirements, we got no response. At this point, we were forced yet again to escalate this to city attorney, Mr. Garcia. Mr. Garcia has refused to answer my code-based challenges to the inept corrections that were, that have been presented with. I am downfounded that a city attorney is so negligent and willing to further subject the City of Glendale to damages. As another very rainy season is approaching, I am openly telling council in front of all of the constituents of this city that if I do not get a response from the city attorney by the end of business day this following Tuesday, October 31st, not only will I change my stance and encourage my client to sue the city for ineptitude and negligence, I will also seek further damages as well. The amount of time that this city has wasted from my firm, I would have had 25 of these projects permitted in other cities. When clients interested in properties in Glendale reach out to me, I tell them of this nightmare story. I also tell them that around the time this project was started, our firm submitted a conversion and addition of a single-family dwelling to a five-unit apartment in a neighboring city. We obtained a building permit within three months of submitting our plans, and that apartment is currently nearly built. If you do not start raining in the rampant bureaucracy plaguing the city, Glendale will lose billions in investments made elsewhere. I have another 30 seconds, if it's okay.
Please wrap it up quickly.
None of what I said today gave me any personal satisfaction. Everyone I have spoken to about this plague feels very emboldened by my direct stance against this bureaucracy. If this ends up leading to legal action, I assure you that others will follow in my footsteps. Please heed to my request and provide me with a written response to the email I wrote to your city attorney. Please also look into the planning review process, fire anyone who is causing unnecessary delays, and continue working on revising the extremely vague and subjective design guidelines as I am told you are in the process of doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do we have, we have his contact information on that?
We do, we do.
Every one of you is CC'd in the emails, and you will be, you will be, continue to be CC'd in all the emails until my client gets his permit.
Yeah.
And we're just hoping to get this resolved without seeking legal action.
Okay.
And just off script, if I may, sir?
No, no, we gave you more than five minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Araik Sinanyan?
Okay, I might go over a few seconds, but hello, everyone. My name is Araik Sinanyan, and I'm a lifelong Glendalean. I've dedicated most of my life to serving my community, from my time on student governments at Clark Magnet and GCC, to leading the Armenian Students Association at Humboldt State, to volunteering in the Birthright Armenia Program, and to becoming a fellow at the ANCA in Washington, DC. In 2020, I also founded the organization Bridging the Borders, which focuses on indigenous Armenian issues and building solidarity with other communities. I know you're all looking down, but I would like some attention. In over 15 years of community leadership, I have never seen such an egregious example of unchecked Armenophobia and covert racism as what took place on the evening of October 10th, which also happened to be the day after Indigenous Peoples' Day. Many might not understand, including all of you, the difference between over and covert racism. A quick Google search defines a microaggression as indirect, subtle, or unintentional discrimination against members of a marginalized group. This is exactly what Paula Devine did when she equated the Armenian genocide recognition efforts to talking about genocide every week. Her comment flies in the face of 100 years of Turkish denial and trivializes the continuation of that genocide that is taking place against the Armenians of Artsakh today. Despite your comment tonight, apologizing for us misunderstanding you is not an apology. After speaking against this comment at the city council meeting on October 10th, I was messaged on my personal Instagram profile by a city employee and admin assistant to the Glendale City Council, who berated me for my vulgar and disrespectful message. This is a person I have only met once in my life, which was my only interaction with them before receiving this message. This behavior is unacceptable. No one should fear backlash from city officials for comments made during the city council's open session, especially when they are speaking out against racism and injustice. After waiting a week with absolutely no reply from the city council, not one member, we shared the incident to our online community. With over 36,000 views, Armenians and non-Armenians alike from all over the world chimed in regarding the stain that is currently on the City of Glendale, which hails a 32% Armenian population and is home to the largest Armenian community outside of Armenia. I would like to amplify some of their voices that spoke out against this dangerous rhetoric and behavior. They act like the Armenian genocide stopped. Thank you for speaking up and calling out the complicit Armenians. The only time I've heard anyone talk about the Armenian genocide was from System of a Down. We have talked enough about the Armenian genocide is so casually evil, it should result in forced impoverishment and a reeducation camp. She serves a community where many, if not most, are descended from Armenian genocide survivors. She acts like it's some obscure thing that keeps getting brought up. They ethnically cleansed Artsakh two weeks ago. They still have our illegally detained civilians and leaders, but the statute of limitations has already expired. No action is being taken, and that's why we talk about it all the time. These privileged elected officials think once they get elected, they can show their true face and disregard those who elected them. This council needs a reality check every single day. She ought to get fired. The world needs to know that Armenophobia comes with a price from now on. As an Armenian, I'd like to apologize on behalf of all the annoying Armenians that constantly annoy Paula and her sensitive ears regarding our genocide. It must be terrible for her and to have to listen to Armenians constantly advocating for their people and nagging and nagging, trying to get attention from public servants. I'm truly sorry. Now go fuck off and thank your lucky stars you are lucky enough to live among us and perhaps learn a few things like humility and humanity. Seriously, though, who the fuck votes for these jackasses? I sure as hell didn't. End of comments. Glendale has a long history of racism, including Armenophobia, and it's time for a real reckoning. From it being the center of the American Nazi Party in the 1930s, to being a sundown town until the 1960s, to running black business owners out of town in the 1980s, to the racist hiring practices of the Glendale Police Department against Armenians in 2010, to the city council funding a Glendale biennial that featured mostly white and absolutely zero artists in 2018, to Paula Devine's lack of support for the Artsakh Avenue name change in 2018, to her comment complaining about Armenian genocide recognition efforts in 2023. Racists of Glendale have been allowed to run rampant for far too long and have recently been hiding under performative allyship and pseudo solidarity for other groups such as the queer community and Paula's statement regarding the Israel-Palestine conflict.
Your time is up. Time is up. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Yes.
You know, I have spent years working with this Armenian community, and I love the Armenian community. I respect them. I respect mostly their love of family and, and how they help their family abroad. I often say that actions speak louder than words. If you think that I don't care about the Armenian community, if you think that I don't care about the genocide or about Artsakh, let me tell you a couple of things. The Armenian University of, the American University of Armenia, I have contributed to this great establishment, this institution in Armenia. Is that discrimination? I have accompanied Homenetmen to the Pan-Armenian Olympics and recently sponsored an athlete for this year's Armenian Games. Is that racism? The Armenian Relief Society is currently attending a conference in Yerevan and took with them supplies to aid the humanitarian crisis in Artsakh. I made a donation to them so that I could help. The Armenian Bone Maro Registry, I have supported that for years. Visited the Lighthouse Project outside of Yerevan, a home that helps victims of domestic violence, and I have contributed to them. While mayor, I proudly and happily signed the lease for the Armenian-American Museum, and I have donated to that project, and I am looking forward to its fruition. And finally, do you know what the Glendale Youth Alliance is? Are you familiar with that? They have, okay, tomorrow, I am receiving the Legacy Award from the Glendale Youth Alliance for my support of that organization because I believe in the Armenian youth, I believe in the Armenian community. I will stand by this community. I have stood behind this community and with this community, and I have friends, and I, believe me, I do not take the genocide as a passing event. It's critical that we all, that we all stand behind the Armenians and know that the genocide happened and we need to have retribution. Artsakh is now a humanitarian crisis, and I am, I am right there with all of my Armenian friends to help that community. So for you to come to this council, you don't know me. You don't know of me, and you don't know me. And I think that's totally unfair, and if anyone, and your, your organization is called Bridging the Borders, as far as I'm concerned, what you're doing is tearing down bridges. I have worked for 20 years in this community to bridge the non-Armenian community and the Armenian community together, and I have been proud of that work. And I, it saddens me, it saddens me to hear you come to this council and chastise not only me, but some of my colleagues and other members of the community. I think there needs to be, yeah, he's walking out. Anyway, I will finish by saying, my heart is with the Armenian community. I love the Armenian community, I respect it, and I will stand by it forever. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on. Vahik Nazari. And I know there are a number of people that want to speak on the 332 West Lamita. Do you want to each speak individually, or do you want to?
She's translating.
Or?
I will translate whatever he says.
I'm sorry, say that, say that.
I will translate whatever he says in Armenian.
Okay, you'll translate? Okay. Yes, go close to the microphone, please, so we can all.
Mayor Botman, would they have additional time for the translation? They should have double the time.
They double the time.
Yeah, well, they've both put in cards.
He lives?
Well, I have, I have Vahik Nazari, I have Anush Nazari.
Yeah, that's us.
The translations double the time.
Yeah, okay.
Vahik Nazari. Okay. Go ahead. He lives at 332 West Lamita Apartment 10 since 2001, he says.
It used to be a low-income building. He rented it for $550, and then they raised the rent to 770, and right now, that's how much he pays. Four months ago, the old owner, the previous owner sold the building to the new management, and the new management company did not give them any contract, and they gave them a notice to evict the building. They gave the whole building two weeks, two months' notice to evict the building because of important reconstructions. There are 15 units, and they have been given two months to evict the building before the Christmas, and. 95% of the tenants are receiving either SSI or low income or disability or Section 8 housing. Every, like I said, everybody has been given a notice to evict the building, and on his behalf, he says he is receiving an SSI for $1,000 for a month, and how is he gonna afford living in Glendale or any other place with that kind of money? And he's refusing to leave, to leave the building. He cannot afford to go rent somewhere else. The management provided $2,500 check to the tenants so they can leave, and he, and they said, the management also said that they can come back in eight months, and he doesn't, he's not clear about, well, how much is the rent gonna be if they come back? And how are they gonna be leaving? How are they gonna be paying rent when they go out? How are they gonna be paying rent when they go out? And after eight months, they don't know what's gonna happen with them. They're really concerned about how can they get help, how they can protect their rental rights, and if they can, if there would be an attorney representing them, how would that help them? Yeah, and everybody has something to say. He's just keeping it short, and we're here to know what are the rental rights of the tenants and how we can be protected under the law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have, I definitely want to hear from Mr. Calvert, but we have a number of other people that want to speak on the same thing. Let's.
But, but can I ask if, is there anything that sounds illegal in all, in this process that?
Perhaps we can hear from all the speakers.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Perhaps we can hear from all the speakers.
Yeah, let's hear from the speakers, and then we can see what, what we can find out here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members.
Your name?
My name is Hugh McDade, and I am a resident at the Lomita Apartments.
Okay, I got you. All right.
Now, what, what we want, first of all, there's news item today, there's homelessness, there is a real estate shortage in the United States, and there has been an increase, if you notice, of people sleeping in doorways now in Glendale. It's increased. Street beggars have disappeared, but people are homeless, more homelessness in Glendale. So we'd like to have the city council make a motion to extend our evacuation date. They wanted to evacuate us in two months. If you could extend it to December 20th, 2024. We have people with families that have to find places to live, and it's not enough time to relocate.
Okay. And have you also been offered relocation assistance?
No, I haven't been offered, we've been, I've been one of the tenants to evict it, but I have not found anything to relocate in.
But have they offered you any financial settlement?
They, yeah, the owner has offered us, you know, movement money for.
Like a relocation.
Moving van, you know, moving van, moving van.
Is it the same amount, 2,500?
Five, five, 206, no, 2506, I'm sorry. 2506.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's hear from, let's hear from the others. Well, let's, let's hear from everybody, and then we can, we can discuss this, okay? We have also, Karine Simonian wants to speak. Edward Stepanian. Are you Karine Simonian? Yes, please.
First of all, I apologize for my appearance because I am just coming from LAX because my mother passed away in Armenia. I am coming from funeral, and I find the eviction notice on my door, and it was like second surprise, bad surprise for me. I apologize. I came to this beautiful country in 1997, and the reason I came, because in 1988, I lost my brother of the earthquake. He was 24 years old, and my family was like almost dying, and there was no electricity, no money, no gas, nothing. And I, it happened that I win, I won a green card, and I was a translator, I worked with MSF, you know, the, yeah, Massive Without Borders. Yeah. And they like gave me a resume and everything and said, go, go see the world, go your help, your family, and et cetera. And I came, and I was happy, and I find this beautiful building near the church because we are religious people, and we like to go every Sunday church, and it's very close, you know, the Lomita and Central is the church, and. Okay, and our owner, previous owner, Mr. John Hirapecjan, told us that there was some contract with city that this building is like a 50/50 with the city, and he never couldn't raise the rent. The reason he never raised the rent, that was the reason. We didn't, we never saw any paperwork, but we were happy because he never couldn't, but there is another tricky thing. Everything inside of our houses, we do ourselves. Started from flooring, laminate, bedroom, kitchen, et cetera, it's everything. If you ask everybody, they spend a lot of money inside of our apartments, and it was like, like inside because of our owner, previous owner was happy with us, and we never, never missed, I never missed, I don't know anybody, but I, I'm sure they also, they never missed any rent during 25 years. You can check my record, record. And now, because of, I don't know, big Chinese company came here, they, and because our previous owner got sick, I wish he never got this health problem, they sold the building in 2023 June, and the new people, they never came to us. You want the lease, you want the contract, you are, you are leaving, and now after a couple of months, they decided that we are going to be homeless. It's not important for them, they important for them to come to like throw us as a garbage. I don't know. And we don't know what to do because, as Vahik said, bless you, as Vahik said, it's in 95, maybe 99%, our tenants are sick, old, low-income people and Section 8 people, and I don't know what to do, and we don't know what to do. And during these 25 years, everybody here are voted, we, I, especially I, always voted for Mr. Kasabian, with Asatryan, Paula Devine, yeah, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't, maybe, no, no, maybe, maybe, because, because when I saw that you are with our guys, I voted with the guy, and of course, Mr. Najarian and everything, and Michael Garcia and everybody. We, we always voted for, I always voted for you guys, and now I need, we need your help. I don't know, we don't know what to do. What is our right? Who can like defend us? If you can like, I heard when a city buy a property, they get, they gave some compensation, yes, for that, but now because he's the owner, I don't know, he can give us $2,506, it's not a compensation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Let's hear from, let's hear from Edward Stepanian.
He needs a translation.
Okay. Can somebody, will you, will you help him? Will you help him? Excuse me, excuse me. Okay.
A lot of, you know, I told them already that a lot of people left, all of them were here, but they left, they want just to let you know that because of the sickness, they couldn't stay longer.
I understand.
I also can say, I'm hungry, I'm tired.
I'm sure.
And I need to grieve my mother loss, so, but I'm here.
Okay. Well, let's hear, if, if Mr. Stepanian wants to add some other information, and then we'll, we'll see what we, what's possible.
Okay. He lives in this building from 2020? Yeah, he changed the apartments, he first, another apartment, and then the first apartment, number first. Yeah, he's talking, because he does not understand English, he is talking about the same that I told you, that because our rent was never increased, that's why we have an agreement with our previous owner, and he did, and I did, everybody did their remodeling inside of, that's the same. When he entered number first apartment, it was in a horrible situation. He changed doors, windows, air conditioning, everything, flooring, bedroom, himself, and he spent a lot of money and hard work because he is a handyman. He was thinking that he's spending money because he's going to live long there because the building has like a low-income, code, low rent and low-income code, coding, because we heard about it from our previous owner, that's why he did a lot. He could understand the new owners if that, like, the building is like demolishing, and so it's not like important building anymore, it's not livable, livable building, that's why maybe he can, could understand the new owners, why he is like evicting, but he knows that he wants just to make money, more money. Yeah, the building is same old building. And what he described in the paperwork that the new owners sent us, that he is going to like put dry washer and electricity and et cetera, it will not change the construction of the building. Yeah, during these years, every year, the Section 8 came to, a lot of, we have eight apartments from Section 8, and they, every time was like, wow, what, what a nice apartment you have, because they did all by themselves, and they approved it, and they receive, see eight, yes, eight apartments, they have receiving Section 8, how it's possible if it's not livable, how it's possible that Section 8 proved it, and now it's not livable. Now we need, oh, nobody dies during 25 years, and Mr. McDade lived 38 years. Yeah, 38 years. The building was built in 1964, I, I remember. We, we lost the money, a lot of money, and now when you are, we are on social security, and we are old people, we can't like, what can I do? What can we do? Yeah, we have cancer survivors, we have cancer now patients. He has two surgeries, his wife has. Heart surgery has her wife, his wife. Yeah, now she's feeling very bad, that's why she's not here with her. Now we are asking for your help because we don't know where to go and who to ask to help us. He was wondering, does new owners doesn't know, they did inspection, they came and they took pictures in our apartments, he saw what's going inside, and why? Now he decided that it's not livable and we need to go away, become homeless. We hope you will help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Let's, I appreciate everybody coming, I know you didn't all speak, but you're all here. I would like to hear from.
Before that, Mr. Mayor, can I ask whether anyone who's here this evening from this apartment building has a copy of Orenakonek? If anyone has a copy of what they were presented, can we at least see it?
Yeah, Mr. Kasabian, there is a little difference. Where Section 8, they receive 90-day notice, who doesn't have Section 8, we have only two months' notice until December 20.
Just so we can see it and if we can get.
Yeah, and maybe a little bit, small points, points of difference.
Wait, Section 8 had how long?
90 days.
90 days, yes, three months, but we have only 60 days until December 20. So Merry Christmas to us.
Okay, so let's.
And how many, can I also ask one more? How many are being evicted? How many?
Everybody.
How many?
I think you said 15, right?
15 apartments. 15 apartments, we can count.
15 units, the whole building.
No, no.
Okay, let's, excuse me.
But you'll count.
Yeah, let's take a seat, take a seat right now.
Thank you.
And we'll see, we'll just try to get a few facts from.
I have a clarifying question.
Have Mr. Calvert address it.
Clarifying question.
Okay, please.
Is it okay if I ask an Armenian?
Yeah, I would like, I would like to get some baseline facts about the building and about what the legal.
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Some of them have noted about being, having the ability to come back eight months later. So are they being evicted, or are they?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that allow Mr. Calvert to provide some general information, then that, all those questions are questions that our staff will be able to follow up with, with individual tenants, because their circumstances will be different based upon.
And Mr. Calvert, maybe you could explain who you are, your role?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for coming and bringing this attention, or bringing this to our attention. If I may recommend this, there are a lot of different potential circumstances here. As has been acknowledged, there are residents on Section 8, those that are not on Section 8. There may be work that's been done, needs to be done, there's a lot of different pieces. What I'd like to be able to do is I know that they have provided cards, if we can get a point or two of contact, and we can let our team work on this tomorrow and figure out if there are violations, if there are other opportunities and options. There's just a lot of moving pieces. This is the first that, I know I am hearing about this, I'm sure for you as well, but there's a lot that we would need to look into. As you know, we have a number of different rules, regulations, ordinances, we have a lot of different programs, policies. I'd like to give my team a chance to look at solutions based on each individual unit, each individual circumstance, because again, they're going to be different across all those units. So if I can get the contact information of each person here, as well as those that were not here, a copy of each of the eviction notice, that would also be helpful, and then potentially a person or two that we can go directly to that maybe can help disseminate information as well would be extremely helpful for us.
Okay.
And we can, if I can add one thing, we will work on this tomorrow, we will make this our highest priority within the Housing Division. We can get answer solutions, I would estimate before the beginning of the day, the following day, if not the close of business tomorrow.
Mayor Bronman, my only concern is that individuals have come here with a crisis on their hands, and, you know, on the surface, it appears that there is someone that is trying to take advantage of some of our laws. It doesn't seem there's something that doesn't appear right to me, especially in terms of the relocation fees. I'd like to have a thorough report to this. In addition to this particular incident, I have also heard of an apartment building that has changed hands, and that residents in that apartment building who have lived there for decades are being now required to pay an additional amount. have lived there for decades are being now required to pay an additional amount for a new deposit fee, and when I asked staff to look about, look into it, I was told that that they are allowed to do that, in addition to increasing the rent, to require people to add more money into whatever it was, their original deposit, I'd like to find out what they're actually doing, and juxtaposed to the person who was here before, that had the issue that has taken two years to get resolved, in terms of what repairs or, you know, things they want to do to their home, it baffles me as to how someone can get permits approved to do remodels on 15 units as quickly as they're purporting to do in the face of someone who's been waiting two years, so I have a lot of questions, but I'll wait for staff to come back to us with information, something definitely is not right.
And if I may, Mayor, council members, we also want to look into that, permits, what work is being executed, related to timeline, things of that nature, we will provide a written report back to council, a memo outlining what's going on, and the actions that we can or cannot take.
And like Mr. Calvert asked for and mentioned, it'll be very helpful if there's a representative that our housing team will work with directly.
It would help us in regards if someone we could reach out to, so that they can help disseminate the information to each individual unit, again, there might be different circumstances for each resident.
Okay, we'll decide if we will be.
Mr. Calvert. I'm sorry for that, I actually, if I may, I think we need to have individual contacts aside from that one individual, what I don't want is one information being passed on to one person, and then how that is perhaps misunderstood or misinterpreted, and then passed on to others, so I would like to see that we deal with each of the individuals separately, you can have a point person as well, but I think, from my experience, I think each person needs to be able to tell their own story.
I think, I think Mr. Ajemian is getting everybody's contact information, Mr. Ajemian? Aram?
Mr. Ajemian?
You're getting everybody's contact information, is that correct?
Correct, Mayor, I'm getting everybody's.
Okay, so we'll have everybody's contact information.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Their names, their full names, their phone numbers, and the units.
And the units, okay, we will be looking into this first thing tomorrow.
Yes, if I may ask, if we could also have section eight status or not as well, that would be helpful for us.
As I even hear, as I even.
Yeah, yeah, so we will look into this, there are a lot of things we don't know right now, at least I don't know, I don't know if this is a, what's called a deed restricted property, if this is somehow comes under some of our rent restricted requirements, we don't know that, there are a lot of things we don't know, and I don't want to speculate, I would like us to get the facts, and then work with you, or work with, with all of you, ideally, we have somebody who can be a kind of a, a point person, but, but, we hear you, we've heard all of you, we thank you for coming, we all feel it, and we all know that this is, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what I would be doing, I would be panicked, so we will, we will look into this and see what we can do.
Can I have a quick question? Because I forgot to ask that question, I was wondering, how is it possible that the new guy got the permit, permit right away, usually people waiting for that, this kind of permit, I have a friend who is building a house, and he's can't finish because it's almost three years.
Well, that's another thing we don't know, we don't know if he has permits.
Yeah, it's very important for us, how gave them permit after he buys a house, building on June, now he got a permit.
No, we don't know he got a permit.
Yeah, please.
So, these are all, that's why we need to collect the facts, and then we can talk about what to do.
Okay, we're not, we're not.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, so as, as an attorney who practices in this area, I would suggest, rather than putting our hopes on our community development department, that we refer these people to either Neighborhood Legal Services, or the Armenian Bar Association, I think they have a tenant relief department, because it looks like the, the notice that is given was clearly done with an eye on all the technicalities, it's not something that someone's just slipshot put together, so they know what they're doing, and you're going to need an attorney, an attorney may take your cases pro bono, for free, and hopefully the staff can give you some numbers, Neighborhood Legal Services is one, Armenian Bar Association is another, it's good that you came to us to let us know, there may be some details that they did not complete properly with Mr. Calvert's department, but at this point, don't panic, but you're going to have to work to help yourselves in this issue, and that does involve getting an attorney, and hopefully, maybe one attorney can take all your cases, because you may be all in the same situation, may be different, some of you are over 60, too, some of you are disabled, some of you are in section eight relief, all those things make differences in relocation, and move out, and all those other things, so don't panic, thanks for coming, but we're going to need to get you a lawyer on this thing, for sure, we can't stop that attorney, or that landlord from doing anything, that's not our power, it's going to be something that an attorney through the court system is going to defend you.
Okay, all right, and this is something you will get, as, as you, as staff follows up with you, they will be able to give you those referrals, okay, all right.
Yeah, I would add that, as part of that, our staff has the connections with the NLS and Armenian Bar to make those referrals as well.
Okay, all right, okay.
Mayor, I think one of the comments that was made is that they're attempting to give them money, so if you can get all the clarification for each of the units, because it seems like.
We'll be looking into every aspect of this.
All the information.
Don't sign anything, don't sign anything at this point, if a landlord's coming and offering you money, sign this, don't, do not do anything until you have had a meeting with an attorney.
Good advice.
Don't cash it.
Don't.
Don't cash.
Okay, good advice, I'm glad we have a, yeah, okay, we will continue on, we have three more speakers, okay, but again, we want to thank you for coming, you did the right thing to come here and talk to us, okay, let's hear from Herbert Milano, if he's still here, there he is, I know it's hard to, it's hard to follow this, but, actually, Mr. Milano has quite a bit of experience in this area.
Yeah, they may, they may want to stay, it's a kind of serendipitous that precisely what I wanted to talk about was multifamily housing issues, and I want to address something that the city, that I proposed many times, and that I would like for the city council to really consider, precisely along these lines, here's my suggestion, that we require that any change in the terms of tenancy have a 12-month notification requirement, I've been proposing something similar to this for many years, I've been given the idea that maybe has to be done at the state level, we couldn't do it at the local level, but I would suggest to the city council to truly consider that, in 2001, I was here at the city council, precisely on something identical to this, on a building on North Brand, same situation, and my heart breaks for these people, because I, I came here as an immigrant, and I lived with my sister, and my brother, and my mother, in a single, we didn't even have a one bedroom, and it breaks me, it's horrible, they, we wind up paying for the, for the, for the sins of this very small minority who basically is, is an abusive process. Second thing I wanted to suggest is that these notifications, when we're talking about disseminating and spending tens of thousands of dollars, I was making the suggestion that we make it a requirement at the transaction level, anyone who's buying an apartment building in Glendale must get either a sign off, or, or a requirement to have these documents concerning the rental rights be confirmed or affirmed through that transaction process. And then I have one more suggestion, number three, and, and that is this one, that any eviction for non-payment of rent, that that amount should be at least one month's rent, and the reason for that is that if a landlord raises a rent by $100, it could be just enough to break that family's ability to pay, and you don't want to see an eviction for $100, they may be able to pay the 200, or if the tenant decides not to pay the $100 because they can't, well, then it's the accumulation of that until they finally get one, one, one month's rent worth, you might consider it something bigger than that, but I was going to make those three suggestions today, and I made those suggestions because I've, I don't know what is coming out of the committee meeting with regard to the report, but I wanted to have these three ideas be salient, I would tell you that the majority of property owners who know their tenants are very considerate with regard to their financial situation, because they develop a relationship, but really, it doesn't mean that everyone who goes into the real estate business, or into multifamily, you know, have a heart when they consider the situations, and you know very well, and I stated it many times, in all my 37 years as a landlord, never once have I filed an eviction notice on any tenant, and I know that there are many people just like me, and we basically take the brunt of individuals who wind up, you know, not paying, you know, for months, but I, I wanted to become part of this committee, because I thought that I could give sensible, prudent ideas on how to solve many of the problems that we find recurring, here it is, 23 years later, it is deja vu, my God, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, and I know we have this item, Mr. Calvert, we have, we had that discussion about rental rights, we have something, there was another meeting of the committee, and we have it coming back to us?
Correct, Mayor, council members, our anticipation is to bring that back sometime in November.
In November, so we're really going to be able to dig into some of these, maybe these policy considerations, some of the things that Mr. Milano's mentioned, that Councilmember Kasakian mentioned.
There were definitely a handful of things in there that were not reconciled, that council directed us to go back and get information from on the committee, so we'd come back for a deeper dive, some of the other elements were kind of straightforward, but we will be digging into about five or six different items that are, will be at length discussion.
Okay, okay, Ramela Ragi. Okay, come up to the mic first, to start, you, you, you need to speak into the mic, okay?
I mean, I'm so angry, over these issues, people left, are right, are being evicted, especially for the renovations, I'm a member of Glendale Tenants Union, I've worked with people that facing eviction here, we're going to courts, and basically, I'm working for people that facing eviction, yeah, and these people are facing eviction, and most of them are seniors, I mean, shame on you, I mean, do something, and, Mr. Court, just don't bother, just don't, don't bother do anything about it, okay, just don't fool us, just stop, stop fooling us.
Do something, or don't do something?
No, no, I'm talking about Mr. Calvert's effort, efforts to do, I don't want to do hocus pocus, but don't do it, okay, just don't do it, yeah, just, just don't make that face, you know, you know what I'm talking about, you're fooling us, you're going to talk to your staff, or whatever, do something about, who, come on, yeah, as, yeah, the problem is, yeah, you know what's solution to this, just stop a temporary, temporary, sub-temporary eviction on this renovation, renovation, just, or, or give them more time, just pass a resolution, what's funny, Ms. Allen, just pass a resolution, at this, pass a resolution, and put your agenda, create agenda to, to stop this renovation, or at this, give, give like generous amount of time to, to these people to, at this, have a time, and, or, collect some money in order to afford to move out, to, yeah, to move in, that, that's the, this is the solution, not the, you're just referring staff to, to your staff, to Mr. Calvert, or do something about that, that's, that's the solution, solution is to stop, to stop all these renovations.
Okay, Mr. Dish. Yeah, we don't have any callers, right? We do?
Alan Dish, very quickly, I mean, I wanted to speak about something else, then I spoke with some people here, some of them I knew, it's a small city, so I would like to, again, simply hope something can be done to stop this kind of, we could call it venture capitalism, or vulture capitalism, but some kind of limits will have to be put, so these people will not be evicted, or what, I hope, but nonetheless, let me, because I think you won't let me speak about it, again, I mean, like, why they were here, you already came to some conclusion, like.
No, you could, you have your, you have your time.
I have my five, I have my five minutes, okay, let me, yes, a few very basic, very basic observations, first, we keep hearing this refrain that it's late, like, people here, from the board, also, from the people, say that it's late right now, I mean, but you know, I read some statistics, that Californians regularly get the least amount of sleep, so if anything, it's good to be here at this time, second point, what I wanted to talk about tonight was actually historic districts, and I, why I will, I think they're good, very briefly, you, you know how I talked about the elevator next door, how it's nice it has a ground floor, because it assumes there's a base, from which we start counting, my theory is that historic districts are also some kind of base, now you think I'm crazy, no, I will shamelessly read from the Wikipedia entry for US historic districts, the significance, it says, historic preservation in the United States was in its infancy before 1966, that year, the US Conference of Mayors penned an influential report, which concluded in part, the Americans suffer from a sense of, quote, rootlessness, end of quote, they recommended historic preservation to help give Americans a sense of orientation, the creation of the National Register of Historic Places in 1966 helped instill that sense of orientation, the mayor sought, so, for me, not only do historic buildings like Casa Verdugo and so on act as buffer zones, but also historic districts themselves do so, they provide the necessary background, the backdrop, which make things like Brand Park, Verdugo Mountains possible, so how is it possible then, when, two weeks ago, one of our favorite council members, no irony, a council member I admire very much, the conservative Mr. Eric Najarian, adopted the most left liberal attitude imaginable, and said, but are you aware that historic districts are rooted in history of redlining, excluding certain minorities, and so on, and so on, and he quoted some articles from the past couple of years, and you simply said, yes, we have not had this discussion for one minute, and we should have this discussion, so permit me with a couple, one minute left, to conclude on how such a discussion should occur, I think, my point will not be here, to get caught up in some false passion of suspicion, you know, like, this idea that, precisely because, a quote from a French guy, he's, Jean-Paul Milner, sorry, I'm getting confused, but he says, this guy from France, precisely because the cultural heritage of the West cannot free itself from the inequalities, inequalities that made its existence possible, says Milner, past denouncers of inequality are themselves considered to benefit from one or another previously unrecognized inequality, end quote, all the revolutionary movements and notions of revolution themselves are subject to suspicion now, simply because they belong to the long line of dead white males, end of quote, my point here would be, again, very precisely, there is some truth to it, okay, but in the same way, would you agree that human rights, when they first were invented, also meant for white land-owning males, but then, you know, women said, Mary Wollstonecraft, why not us also, then, blacks rebelling in Haiti, why not us also, so it's crucial that we have maybe the discussion, but again, it should be done, like, without falling into some false hysteria of racism, and so on, and so on, let me just say this, of course, you know, I've tried to talk about here, people like Mike Mohill and so on, combine the left and the right, but not in a cheap way, all I'm saying is, for me, without taking into account people like Mike Mohill, Alan Durham, the left is lost, thank you.
Okay, we have a call.
We have one caller, Gustavo Moreno, you're on area, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, my comments regarding the proposed residential electric rate increases of 54% by 2026. And to clarify comments on a Q and A Rule 1135. I have asked GWP numerous times if using Rule 1135 is possible. In fact, I last asked GWP publicly at the community meeting regarding the proposed rate increases on October 19, 2023, held at the police community room. During the police, during the question and answer session, the answer, as in all previous times, was in the affirmative. Thank you, Honorable Mr. Najarian, for asking the question I get a different answer to. The rate increases affect everyone, especially the over 26,000 Glendale residents currently experiencing poverty whose expected rate increase will be 72% by 2026. To put this officially to rest, please ask the city attorney the following question to get a definitive answer. Question, can Glendale legally procure thermal generation before December 31, 2023 to satisfy regulations including Rule 1135? I specifically said legally, this does not mean that turbines need to be in the ground. Catalina was given a special exemption, Glendale is also a special case. Complementary solar is great, however, we need an additional 50 megawatts of thermal generation to keep rates down and prevent blackouts. In closing, this is a very important issue and is now nearing a billion-dollar blunder or over $5,000 per resin and impact and will impact our public finances for 30 years. Thank you, I respect the yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is adjourned.
Adjourned.
Right.
Okay, we're adjourned, 9:53. Thank you, everyone.